Good afternoon. Meeting will come to order. Julie, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Pujol?
Here.
Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Higgins?
Here.
Vice Chair Campanella?
Here.
Chair Thompson?
Here.
Okay, preliminary matters. Renee, what do you have for us?
Mr. Chair, I don't have anything in the preliminary matters. I might, well, just one update. Last week, I announced that we did receive an appeal of the approval of 2559 Posedal Soul. That's the Santa Barbara Museum of Natural History. City Council did set the appeal hearing date for March 24th. And that's all I have.
Well, I have an announcement I think everybody on the Commission already knows, but Ms. Brooke was named as the replacement Betty Wees, who we also have sitting here. So, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited, looking forward to the challenge.
Well, I'll have to train somebody new then. Okay. Our next item is a recommendation to the Council on potential drought-related development restrictions, not overall water restrictions, but development restrictions. So, Renee and Allison, over to you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Allison Debusk, project planner. And today, the purpose of our discussion is to consider potential drought-related development restrictions. We also want to hear public comment on the issue, and ultimately, we'd like the Planning Commission to provide feedback to staff and the City Council on these suggested drought-related development restrictions. Specifically, the development restrictions that we're going to talk about today are landscape deferral, suspension of building permits for new pools, and suspension of building permits for projects with net new water use. And before I get into the details of each of those development restrictions, I did want to give you some key terms and numbers that we'll be using throughout the day to help you make sense of the water reduction numbers associated with each of the development restrictions. So, the main term that you'll see is probably AFY, which is acre-feet per year, and one acre-foot is equal to 325,851 gallons. The city's normal water demand for any given year is 14,600 acre-feet per year, and our drought water demand is 20 percent less than that. It's 11,680 acre-feet per year. And although we're not here to talk about water supply or drought planning, I did just quickly want to show you this chart that was presented to the City Council last week as part of their monthly drought update. And as you can see here, we're currently in year four of the drought, and the red indicates the amount of conservation that's needed of city customers. And as you can see, when we get to year six, which is 2017, there is a shortfall, and that shortfall is not covered by either the city's conservation or even by the D-SAL plant. And the D-SAL plant is this portion of the chart, the light green color. So, the first development restriction that we want to talk about is landscape deferral. Outdoor water use accounts for 50 percent of our overall water use, and so a deferral on the installation of landscape plantings would help reduce the water demand associated with new development. This would only apply to new development projects, which are already required to use water-efficient landscaping, but even water-efficient landscaping requires water to get established. As staff has outlined in the program, this deferral would only affect what we're calling aesthetic landscaping. For environmental and safety reasons, staff recommends that landscaping required with, required for compliance with the stormwater management program, environmental mitigation measures, creek restoration, and erosion control would still be required. And we've termed these the non-aesthetic portions of the landscape plan. Staff is proposing that this program begin as a voluntary program, so any project or applicant that wanted to defer installation of landscape plants could do so, and then the program could become mandatory if the City Council decides that additional water restrictions are needed. Staff estimates that a mandatory landscape deferral would result in annual savings of approximately 4.4 acre-feet per year, and given the requirement to provide the non-aesthetic landscaping, primarily stormwater management compliance, staff estimates that there would be a 23 percent reduction in landscape water use for new development, and so that's how we get to the 4.4 acre-feet per year. Residential projects would provide the most opportunity for savings, and we don't expect to see much savings on non-residential development. Another potential development-related restriction under consideration is the suspension of building permits for new pools. The city averages approximately 14 new pools per year, and those pools require water for their initial filling and then for ongoing operation. Staff estimates that this restriction would save approximately .79 acre-feet per year, and that's for the initial filling, then with an annual operation savings of one acre-foot per year. This is a very small portion of overall citywide water use, but there are currently water-use regulations in place that were adopted as part of the Stage Two regulations that limit refilling existing pools by more than one-third. And so, this regulation would make our treatment of new pools more consistent with our treatment of existing pools. Another more significant tool for reducing water demand would be to suspend the issuance of building permits for projects that result in net new water demand. Generally, this would include projects that have new residential units or new non-residential square footage. It would not affect additions to single-family residences or other multifamily residential structures. Staff would calculate the water demand based on the existing and proposed land use, using the 2009 water demand factors that were part of our water demand factor update report. So, looking at the big picture, and to give you some context for the amount of water that we're talking about, even if all pending and approved projects were to be built and occupied this year, it would result in only 124 acre-feet of year, acre-feet of additional water demand. And I do want to point out that the numbers in this chart for the approved projects are slightly lower than the ones that were in your staff report, and that's because in going through the list again, we found some projects that actually had had their building permit issued already, so that's why it's slightly lower. And the projects that are included in these lists are projects that have been submitted over many years. Some of them are more than 10 years old, and they still have valid approvals because of the automatic extensions that have been granted by the state for tentative maps. If we bring these numbers down to the amount of new water demand that we would actually expect to see go online in any given year, we have a couple estimates. One is from our General Plan Update Final Environmental Impact Report, and it took the amount of development expected over the 20-year life of the general plan and found that that would result in 40 acre-feet per year of new water demand. Staff also looked at all the building permits that received occupancy over the last 10 years, and that averaged to 28 acre-feet per year. That average did include a wide range, you know, from eight to 55 acre-feet per year, but we think that the 28 is a reasonable average. And to give you a comparison, in 2004, we granted occupancy for 38.54 acre-feet of new water demand, and that's based on occupancy. And in 2004, we issued building permits for projects that would eventually result in 16.46 acre-feet of new water demand. 2014? Yes, sorry, 2014. Staff has suggested some possible exemptions for the restriction on new development. These include projects that are 100 percent affordable housing, projects that are considered essential services, such as schools, libraries, public works projects, shelters, or medical clinics. We've also included an exemption for what we've termed reasonable development, and that's development that has a minimal new water demand, but would still allow for some improvements to existing structures. The example we gave was a non-residential addition of less than 500 square feet, and that number is thrown out for discussion purposes. We also included T-Fire rebuilds, given that some of those lots have been vacant for many years. So now, in terms of how this restriction would be implemented, administratively, it means that projects would be able to continue through the planning process. They could get Planning Commission approval and design review approval. However, they would not be able to submit the project for a building permit if it results in net new water use. Staff is suggesting, excuse me, that whatever development restrictions the city ultimately implements, that we would also apply those to city water customers that are outside of city boundaries. On the flip side of that, we would need to decide what happens to projects that are within city limits but are not served by city water. Ultimately, the City Council will need to determine what happens to those building permits that have been submitted and are in the plan check process but have not yet been issued. Another consideration would be phased projects. For example, a project where they've submitted for their development plan, or, excuse me, they've submitted for a demolition permit or some other starter permit, but they haven't yet received the building permit for the portion of the project that actually results in net new water use. So, the question is, would those starter permits vest the project for purposes of the building permit suspension? And this suspension, the way it's laid out, it could be made more restrictive by not allowing any exemptions, or it could be more lenient by including more exemptions. For example, you could recommend that all projects that have already been approved be allowed to continue through the project, through the process, and obtain building permits. There are also policy considerations associated with implementation of this type of development restriction. For example, it would likely halt all new AUD projects, and as you know, the AUD program is an important component of our land use and housing elements. So, staff would appreciate specifically comments on the scope of this restriction, as well as the exemptions that have been proposed. It's really the focus of today's discussion. We also wanted to talk with you briefly about some potential zoning ordinance amendments that we're considering in order to promote water conservation. One suggestion is to allow rain barrels to encroach into interior or rear yard setbacks and open yard areas. And so, staff would be looking for other suggestions along this line, and we anticipate that these types of zoning ordinance amendments would move forward ahead of the larger zoning ordinance update that's currently underway. Additionally, I just want to make the Planning Commission and the public aware that the Water Resources staff is working with the Water Commission on some additional water use regulations. These could include restrictions on watering turf and restrictions on the method of irrigation for non-turf areas. But that is really just for informational purposes, and I want to be clear that we are focusing today on the development restrictions that have been outlined. So, this concludes staff's report, and I would like to mention that we have a dedicated email address for comments and questions about the drought. It's ldt drought at santa barbara ca.gov. And I would also like to mention that we have Water Resources Division staff available to answer your questions as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody on the Commission have any immediate questions to ask of staff? Okay, we'll take public comments at this point. Standard two minutes. I'll call your name, and the next one, just come on up to the microphone. Steve Fort, followed by Glenn Mueller.
Good afternoon, Chair Thompson and Planning Commissioners. I'm Steve Fort with Suzanne Elledge Planning and Permitting. I did submit a letter also, and I'm just going to kind of go over that briefly. Again, with Suzanne Elledge Planning and Permitting, we represented hundreds of applicants over the years getting permits through the city, and we're closely following the drought, drought matters, local water policy and implications, and how it affects our business, and with the understanding that, of course, we all have to sacrifice and pitch in. So, we have reviewed the staff report. We'd like to share a couple of thoughts. We support the measure that would defer the installation of certain landscape until the drought is over. This seems reasonable and manageable, and wouldn't result in any long-term or short-term negative impacts, given that mitigation plantings and erosion control would be allowed to move forward. Would like to just point out that be mindful of potential burden placed on staff and applicants in terms of additional work, in terms of enforcement cases, procuring bonds, that sort of thing. We do support the measures that were discussed regarding the additional and alternative options, like mandatory gray water systems, reducing building permit fees for fixture retrofits. We had a question about one of the items in the staff report in this section, about retrofits of point of, at point-of-sale. We were wondering if that meant when a house is going to be sold, would retrofits be mandatory? In contrast, the potential suspension of the pool permits and new development permits, going along with a relatively minor water use savings, don't appeal, don't appear to yield sufficient benefit to be worthwhile to offset the potential negative economic impact, which seems like it might be disproportionate to the amount of water that might be saved by those types of restrictions. We have some questions about the details regarding the restrictions. Again, I'm going to hit on a couple of these. They're all outlined in our letter. The proposed method for calculating water demand is based on generic use factors. Would the city accept more accurate, project-specific demand calculations prepared by a qualified consultant as an alternative? How will the city consider phased projects that have building permits for some elements but not others? If there is a project that would result in a net decrease in water use but has a pool, would permits for the pool be denied, potentially resulting in a hole in the middle of a project? And then, as an alternative to permit suspension, would you consider a fee charge to new development that would, projects that, charge to projects that would result in a net reduction in water demand, which could go into a fund perhaps that might be used by those seeking to retrofit their irrigation systems and plumbing systems? We do encourage you to focus on measures that have a significantly greater impact on water demand. I note that Ms. Debusk just was talking about Water Resources Division and the Water Commission looking at addressing water savings through water use regulations related to irrigation. And we noted in the staff report, the significantly larger potential water savings based on those, and we encourage you to focus on those. And finally, if you do implement restrictions on new development, we would just urge that restrictions don't apply to projects that have been deemed complete, that have been approved, or have building permits. We just stress that applicants have gone through a lot, expended a lot to get to that point, and it would be, could be devastating to have them suspended at those points. And I also want to point out, I just realized it during the presentation, that AUD projects could possibly be affected, and we would certainly consider that unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Mueller, followed by Bill Medel.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Glenn Miller, and the purpose of my comments relate to the suspension of building permits. I'm one of the owners at the property at 420 East Annapamoo. We have entitlements for two additional condo units. It's an R3 property. And I'm addressing you from the standpoint of fairness and looking at it from a cost-benefit perspective. From a benefit to the city, you saw the statistics where it's only 1 percent or less benefit of savings if you were to suspend all of the building permits. On the other hand, the cost to the developers, it was just commented by the earlier presenter, there's been a lot of time and money, fees, different costs associated with going through the entitlement process. And in our particular case, it's been seven years waiting for the market to come back. In some cases, it might only have been three or four years, but there's been a timing issue in terms of the market wasn't ready for these condo units, and now the market is ready. And suddenly, if the building permits is suspended for those projects that have entitlements, that's a major impact upon the developers. So, I would invite you to consider a proposal that would suspend the approval of applications for entitlements. In other words, if somebody's already in the system and they have the entitlements, they would be allowed to get their building permit. But if someone is going to go through the entitlement process, they would be told in advance that, okay, we have a water shortage situation, we're not quite sure where this is going to go, you can go through the entitlement process and you can get a conditional approval, depending upon the stage of the water situation at the time that we'd give you approval. And that would seem to be fair to all the parties involved, because the people going into the system, when they applied for entitlement, they would know what the circumstances are when they would make a decision about how much money they would like to devote to it and the resources, et cetera. Whereas, the people who are already in the system, they've devoted a lot of time and money, and they had to sit and wait for the market, the financing, all those different matters, and now's the time, and suddenly, they may have a problem getting building permits. So, if you would respectfully consider my proposal, I would appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Medel, followed by John Schuck.
Thank you, Chair Thompson, fellow Commissioners. My name is Bill Medel. I'm here representing the Montecito Country Club, and, boy, timing's everything, isn't it? We've had this project approved since 2009. I want to read this letter to you, and I'm also going to hand it back in to staff. Members of the Commission, the Montecito Country Club is currently in the process of obtaining building permits with respect to the previously approved improvements to the Montecito Country Club and golf course. MCC has obtained a grading permit for a portion of the project, is in the plan check process for the golf course-wide grading, grading improvements, and improvements around the main clubhouse. MCC anticipates submitted working drawings, which are currently in progress, for other elements of the, of the project within the next few months. And having reviewed the staff report, report for drought-related development restrictions, MCC was, was surprised by the city's calculation that the MCC project would result in a net water increase, thus be subject to the potential suspension of building permits contemplated in the staff report. And I'm quoting from the August 2009 negative declaration prepared by the city. "The project, the proposed project is not anticipated to demand more water than the current development, as the total amount of square footage on this, on this, on the site would be increased, be relatively small amount, and that increased square footage is intended to serve the same memberships as currently. Additionally, the project would result in reduced amounts of turf area, thereby reducing landscaping water demand, and the project includes an updated irrigation system that will better manage water needs. It is anticipated that these irrigation improvements, combined with the reduced turf area, will result in a 10 to 20 percent reduction in overall water consumption." End of quote. Further, we are extremely concerned that even if the building permits were allowed to be issued, a critical portion of our project, the revised swimming pool and recreation area, may not be permitted. MCC cannot proceed with the proposed, proposed project without the pool and related structures. Phasing of this project would cause hardship to the members and adjacent neighbors. MCC objects to the proposed drought-related development restrictions as they apply to the Montecito Country Club and Golf Course project on the following grounds. Based on staff analysis, the contemplated water savings from the proposed measures are extremely minor, in light of the devastating and unfair impact the proposed measures would have on some projects. Montecito Country Club is an entitled project with an issued grading permit, and the applicant has expended considerable amounts of funds on working drawings and expectations that the entitlements would be honored. Many other projects are in similar stages of the entitlement process. The proposed improvements to the golf course include reduced irrigated turf from 95 acres to approximately 75 acres. A state-of-the-art, computerized irrigation system is also included. The renovated golf course will greatly reduce water usage and greatly improve water quality compared to the city's own municipal course and other area golf courses. As staff noted in its project environmental analysis, of the proposed project will result in significant annual water savings. So, based on the above, MCC requests that the contemplated suspension of building permits not apply to the Montecito Country Club project, including the modified pool, and be allowed to proceed through the plan check process. Thank you, Commissioners, for consideration your comments. While Montecito Country Club is fully aware and appreciative of the seriousness of the current drought, the proposed measures have the potential to be far more detrimental, detrimental than beneficial, as they would result in minimal water savings, unnecessary regulation, and disproportionate impacts to approved projects across the city. Now, many of you have, have sat in as we presented our project to you, and so we're kind of in a, do we keep the existing course as is, or do we provide a state-of-the-art course with water-saving techniques and everything else that we have presented to you in the past? So, I am going to submit this letter for your consideration, and thank you very much.
Thank you. John Schuck.
Commissioner.
Followed by Greg Wrights.
Commissioner Thompson and Commissioners, I'm John Schuck. I am a resident of Santa Barbara for the last 30, 38 years, and I'd like to just make a couple of points relative to the suspension of permits. The, in my, my opinion, I recommend that the approval threshold be, at least the approval threshold, be the determining factor of whether a project should go forward, not, not at building permits, for two reasons. One, as I already alluded just now, tremendous amount of money and consultants and time is spent just getting it approved. But once a project is approved, several significant events occur. Many times, contingencies are waived. Many times, a project is purchased at that point, financing set up, partnerships formed, and also, architects and engineers are given the go-ahead to begin their final drawings. And it would be a significant financial setback for those people, and even could, you know, threaten ownership at that particular point in time. But in addition to that, I would like to make the point that it would probably take at least three years to build out all currently approved projects, because they have to get permits and all like that. And at the numbers that were shown on the board of 52 acre-feet, it's only 17 acre-feet a year. And by my calculations, that's 60, that's .16 percent, or 16, 10 thousandths of the current city's demand, and it's minuscule, to say the least. And that savings is just dwarfed by the, what is mentioned in the staff report, of 630 to 1100 acre-feet for water use regulations. Those savings potentially are 30 to 50 times more than just allowing the approved projects. And I just leave you with, I, my, my suggestion is you shoot for the big target, and if you got a quarter of the big target, which is water use regulations, it'd still be 10 times the amount of water savings than if you got all the savings from the currently approved project, the small target. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Greg Wrights.
Good afternoon, Chair Thompson and Planning Commission. My name is Greg Wrights. I'm with Rethink Development, and we have an AUD project on Upper State Street at 385-387 State Street. It's 89 units. And we're nearing start of construction on that project. Excited to get it rolling. I just wanted to point out a few things about AUD projects and modern buildings that are being built today. AUD project, or, let's start with modern buildings. Modern buildings are designed to be very, very water-efficient these days. Our building in particular, with Rethink Development's focus on sustainability and water efficiency, has ultra-high-efficiency toilets, high-efficiency faucets, and, and low-flow shower, showerheads. So, we're saving a lot of water in the, in the units. It has drought-tolerant landscape with drip irrigation. And that amount of landscape is very low on a higher-density project that you might, you might see a condo project with lots of lawns or, you know, other extensive landscaping. An AUD project has, has less space for that, so using very little water, both in the technique... So using very little water, both in the techniques and the design, but also in the amount of landscaping. And so I just want to point out those facts about AUD projects in particular, and modern buildings having a very low impact in themselves on water use. And then because Rethink Development is focused on sustainability, and we incorporate water efficiency into our project, and this one in particular, we're willing and able and offering to support any water efficiency efforts that you may undertake. So if we can be a model, if we can share our designs and share our techniques with others throughout the city, we'd be happy to do that and be waiting to be called on for that. So I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other speaker slips, so unless there's anyone else who'd like to come up, we'll close the public testimony and bring it back to the commission for questions. Anybody have any questions for staff? Mr. Jordan.
Mr. Chair. I just have a question on, in general, on those back pages where you talk about, the right-hand column has the H2O demand, which I assume is yearly acre feet, and just how you get to those numbers. And I just want to pick on one in particular, because I'm recently familiar with it, and it's on page four of the first set. It's the Brazian Way House. It's terrible that everybody has to nod their head and go, yeah, we're familiar with that, aren't we? So that says almost one acre foot a year, right? Which I break that down into almost 800 gallons a day, if you do the math, coming back down, right? And so that seems to me to be real generous. So I'm just wondering if you could talk to me about how, when you see development like that, what the processes you go through to come up with that number for demand?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Jordan, for single-family residential projects, the estimated water demand is based on the lot size. And so for that particular site, it's over an acre, and so our estimated water demand is .95 for any residential, single-family home on a lot of over one acre.
And so that would be regardless of what they were going to do with the lot outside of the house footprint, or an immediate set of landscaping around it? If they're on an acre and a half, and really they're only landscaping a quarter of an acre, we would still do the math that way, right?
That's correct. We calculate it consistently, and it's based on the water demand factors from our water demand factor update, so based on city data.
That'd be, I mean, my general type of observation would be that that's a real generous number. It's a number that, in most cases, as the size of the lot goes up, quite possibly, the demand number you're showing there is actually very generous, right? Wouldn't you think? I think, compared to the size of my house, and the size of his house, and the number of people in my house, and the number of people he's going to have in his house, I mean, we use like 80 gallons a day. So this place is going to use 10 times the number.
Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Jordan, it's primarily based on the amount of land for outside irrigation. That's really where the larger water use numbers.
But not taking into account whether they're actually going to do something on that land. It's just the parcel, right?
That's correct.
Okay. That's my only question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I'll start with a question that was posed by Suzanne Elidge, planning and permitting, in their letter. Proposed method for calculating water demand is based on generic use factors, and so they're asking a question about that, and will the city accept more what they're referring to as accurate, specific water demand calculation? Could someone speak to that, please?
I'm suggesting that Bill Ferguson from Water Resources discuss how the demand factors were developed, specific for Santa Barbara, as he was involved in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I assume you were referring to the 2009 water demand factor that was excerpted.
I think Exhibit C she references, yeah.
There was an update to the 1989 version of that. We prepared that as a part of the support effort to enter into the process of updating the general plan and updating the city's long-term water supply plan. In recent history, we've done those jointly because of the linkage between the two documents. The data came from our billing system as far as water use, and the land use data came from the community development land use database with type of land use assigned by parcel. Those were merged with various techniques of database efforts to develop the factors for the general types of categories we have. And it is true that we looked at the three different categories of single-family residential, recognizing that there's a big difference between the large-lot projects that we've been talking about here and the more frequent and numerous small projects that you would see also. So we thought it was important to make that distinction. And also to distinguish the multifamily category from that as well, because it's a whole different land use, as one of the speakers referred to as well. And in addition to that, there were a number of non-residential uses that were developed, mostly taken from the prior study. There was good background in that one for why the categories were picked, and we did get the conversion of that with the new data from the billing system for those land uses.
Okay, thank you. With Mr. Medel having spoken today, I did have a sort of a question, a twofold question, anticipated overall water use. First of all, I would like to hear from staff in response to Mr. Medel's question and concern about the current perceived status or stated status of anticipated water use at the country club, since we have approved recently kind of two substantial conformance determinations on the project being revised.
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, the water demand that's in the attachments that you received today was based on the water demand factors for the new floor area of building that they're proposing at the Montecito Country Club. So as Mr. Medel said, it does not account for all of the irrigation efficiencies and reduced turf that they would be installing as part of the project. So it is not a site-specific analysis. It's meant to take the land use and calculations based on that.
And why would we not, or why are we not using a site-specific when there is a specific project that's been approved and then revised and re-approved?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, the reason that we chose to use the water demand factors is so they can be applied consistently throughout the city. Back during the last significant drought in late 80s, early 90s, the city used actual water use at a particular site, and that was factored into the equation. And so we wanted to make this a more general analysis, but also because we're using the water demand factors from the 2009 update, it's a fairly accurate and recent analysis of the water use. But there are certainly going to be some projects that have other changes that might make their actual water use different than our estimates.
So that leads me, related to the country club, and I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, unless anything has recently changed, but they are having to use potable water on their golf course because they cannot at this time use, yes, treated water from our wastewater treatment plant. Is that still correct?
I think we can update that.
Because that leads me to a question about the status of our wastewater treatment plan. A number of members of the public have asked me about that, and I want to pose a question about that.
If I might, Chair Thompson, just respond to your earlier question as well, as to why, at this stage, we're proposing not to look at project-specific and historical water use. Again, having been involved in the drought management and moratoriums of the 90s, I can tell you that it was extensive work to look at project-by-project historical use. And what that process also tends to do is favor those who might have been water-wasting, larger, you know, intense water users, had the benefit of possibly being able to develop over someone who may have a vacant lot, as one of your speakers was here today, talking about many years of investment and not being able to proceed. And out of a more consistent, simplified, and fair approach, the staff is recommending using the same factor study that was the basis of the EIR and the long-term water supply plan, as Mr. Ferguson explained. So we feel that that, should something like this move forward, that the consistency and the simplicity and general fairness, you know, any individual case could presumably be a hardship concern, certainly by those proponents. But that's the background on why we're considering the factors. But in terms of the status of the Montecito Country Club's irrigation.
Well, I don't think I need any details. I'm fairly familiar with the rest of the project. I'm just tying the question about how we have evaluated or determined the status of their anticipated water use, which you've now answered, and then connecting to that the fact that they're having to use, again, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we've been told that they're using potable water on the golf course because they can't get it from the wastewater treatment plant. And let me just say, the reason that I'm going here is even though I know the general topic for Planning Commission today is not drought-related and water sources, it is directly tied to any recommendations the Planning Commission would make, certainly any I would make, in terms of development restrictions. So I appreciate your feedback, Mr. Ferguson.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Schwartz, the reference is to the status of the city's water reclamation project, recycled water project. The tertiary filter, which is the primary part of that system at Elster Wastewater Treatment Plant, is undergoing a complete rehabilitation, requires that it be offline in the process. That project began mid-last year, I think maybe late summer, and it's targeted for completion early July, based on latest construction data, at which time it will enter a period of testing and certification of the operation of the facility, and then it will be available for use. So we're close to the time where that water will be back online. It's been.
You said, starting in July, and then when, that last phase, when would we then have it fully online, Mr. Ferguson?
The test and certification period would be 60 days, and so that would put us approximately September. And it will be welcome to have it back. We've missed having it there, but we are working to get it back, and we expect it to be at that time.
Okay.
I just wanted to point to the overhead, which is the overall water supply strategy, and the recycled water is the purple bar at the bottom. For water planning purposes, it's projected to be at its normal full-type capacity, is approximately 1,000 acre feet, maybe a little bit more, in next water year.
Just to make sure that we, as the city, are walking our talk. I'm interested in the water use in all city buildings, city real estate. So I'm wondering, do we have any kind of a chart in here, or is it maybe incorporated into some category that I'm unaware of as to what we are doing as a city to improve and improve efficiency as well?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Schwartz, we don't have that with us, but I can assure you that not just during the drought, but since the last drought, that's been a prime effort in the city for the reason you mentioned, to walk the walk. And we've been leaders in trying all the new technologies, sorting out the ones that work and applying the ones that do work in our facilities, both inside for plumbing fixtures and outside for landscape. So I don't know that we have current data on that. We can certainly do research on that and provide that to your staff.
I would be interested in that information. Thank you. Okay, moving on to my next question here. I think I just have a couple more. Mr. Klon, I mentioned to you that I was apprised of the California Coastal Commission appealing three new private wells that were approved by the county on Channel Drive and the Montecito Planning Commission approved. And the reason I'm bringing that up is I'm wondering if that's going to be, I don't know the status of those appeals by two coastal commissioners, I'm wondering if that, whatever the outcome is, the adjudication, would be precedent-setting for us in terms of not even considering, possibly considering, granting of any new private wells in the city?
Well, certainly it'd be relevant in the coastal zone. I'm not aware of those appeals, and I'm happy to look into it and get back to the commission.
Okay, thank you so much. One of my other questions is, whatever restrictions, new regulations, the city council ultimately approves, how would, let's see, would you look for those to be applied prospectively? Because I think I saw a word in here referring to retroactively, and that sort of raised a concern for me. I guess I've, in my going on six years as a commissioner, I've never been aware that we've been allowed to apply a new regulation retroactively. So could somebody speak to prospective versus retroactively?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, that's a significant policy issue that's always considered at the time any new development-related standards are applied. And typically, information on pending projects and projects that could be affected by a change in regulation is considered by the council, you know, with input from the public on how to make that determination. It really can be on a case-by-case basis. And the nature of this regulation being considered as really an emergency measure, when you consider the context of the drought, a stage-three sort of emergency being determined, the actions that are being needed to be taken throughout the community, it's really a little bit of a different consideration in general. It's not quite the same as new development standards. However, that is also still typically a consideration. It's an important consideration. So staff is just suggesting that how that decision gets made will be really important, as your question implies. And it could be made at any various stages. As members of the public today spoke, one scenario would be that any approved entitlement could go forward. Another could be even though approved, but not without a building permit, wouldn't be. And so we don't actually have a specific recommendation. We're trying to just present the information. I think the table that showed the water use at the projects at the various stages in development, I don't think it's that one, it was an earlier one, is here for your consideration and thinking about whether or not this sort of regulation would be wise and how much water use could actually be saved. Certainly, the more exemptions or threshold decision on how to apply it, allowing existing development, the less savings. And so it's a balance. I don't think it's one way or the other that we know which way it would go.
In watching the council hearing on staff's presentation on this topic initially, there seemed to be some questions by some of the council members, and I was still left wondering also, a couple of things. First, where do new proposed regulations fall in the scheme of enacting them and seeing the beneficial outcomes, let's call it, the benefits, prior to making a decision on the D-SAL plant, which ultimately will be coming to the Planning Commission, should the Coastal Commission approve it, you know, for a CDP? So I wasn't clear from the back and forth among the council members and with staff, how to understand what more severe measures might need to be considered, and at what point in enacting these new regulations, proposed regulations, could we avoid or regardless of that, still trigger the need to invest in D-SAL? And I say that because that's the most significant water supply for us, as I understand from Mr. Hagmark. So I don't know if you can speak to that. And then I have one other question about properties. Anyway, I'll stop there. I have one other question for you after that.
Chair Thompson, I think both water staff and I would like to make a response comment. The city's adopted water plan includes drought-planning measures at each stage, stage one, two, and three. And regulations restricting new water demand, be it through the conservation measures and fees, rate structure, as well as new development, per that plan should be considered at both stage two and stage three. The city began this drought-management process with adopting a resolution with water use restrictions at the stage-two level, and has considered going forward from there. The stage-two resolution did not include any new development restrictions. It could have. Under the city's water planning, that could be an appropriate decision that the council could make at stage two. But our understanding, as we've been before the council a number of times, they have an interest in further understanding what these regulations might result in, and again, that big weighing consideration, how much savings would come from this. And putting off, or just moving that decision down the line to be made at a time where it seems more critical or necessary. And so that's generally been described as something we might anticipate at stage three. that’s generally been described as something we might anticipate at stage-three. But it doesn’t have to wait till stage-three. It’s not required to wait till stage-three. Also, at stage-three, council would not necessarily be required to adopt these sort of regulations. We have proposed them as a staff team, looking at what this sort of regulation might result in in savings for their information and their consideration. In terms of bringing on the D-SAL, as a general rule, I mean, it’s pretty clear that the amount of savings that we’re talking about from new development would not affect the decision to move forward with D-SAL. The acre-feet-per-year that the D-SAL plant’s permitted for and could possibly bring online is from 3,000 to over 7,000 acre-feet-per-year, and we’re talking about much, much less. So, I think she wanted to add another comment on this.
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, my name’s Madeline Ward. I’m the Acting Water Conservation Coordinator. And up here on this screen, we have a tentative timeline for the declaration of stage-three and water-use regulations. So, as you can see, we’re still planning these, getting input on what these water-use regulations would be. Most likely, it would be May that we would have a tentative adoption, and the latest I’ve heard is June is when we would be going to council to ask for input on desalination and awarding that contract. So, this would be in advance of that, most likely.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. So, I’m sorry, two last questions. Should the council ultimately approve any new regulations, landscaping or otherwise, would compliance with the new regulations be on a responsive or reactive basis, in other words, complaint basis? I don’t know if Ms. Weiss or anybody would like to answer that, as opposed to proactive monitoring?
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Schwartz, that’s a great question. In April, we will be going to Water Commission and council to get input on enforcement. Right now, we do have a complaint-based system. We don’t have any kind of patrolling or active enforcement, and that’s something that we would want input on, is how the council would like to proceed with stricter regulations in stage-three.
Okay. And then lastly, I’m wondering how we would apply new landscaping regulations or other types of new drought-related regulations on properties, and I heard this at council also, where either a city property is being served by the Galita Water District, or, for example, I’m looking at the Montecito Water District ordinances, that was the other thing I wanted to research, and it appears as though there’s kind of a general reference. There may be properties on Coast Village Road that are being served by the Montecito Water District. So, how do we, you know, within the city boundaries, but some of our properties not being served by us, how, just in general, how do we do that so that we ensure that we’re equitably, and that’s a term in the Montecito Water Ordinance, equitably apply, appropriately apply the new regulations?
Commissioner Schwartz, in terms of water-use regulations, we are only enforcing on our own city water, so that’s separate from some of the other overlap areas that may be under-
Regardless if the property is in the city, if it’s not being served for whatever reason, maybe historic reason?
Correct. So, along Coast Village Road, that’s not city water, that’s Montecito water, and I think they’re on our sewer service, but they’re not our water customers.
So, sort of bifurcated sewer versus water there? Okay. I think those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. On page two, the first case shows a minus 10.77 amount of acre-feet being used. Is that the Sandman?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, yes, it is. Or, sorry, Commissioner Lodge, yes, that’s the Sandman Project.
That’s a rather amazing amount of water. Is it because there will be more pavement and building than there is now?
That’s correct. They are currently a hotel with a restaurant, and so the water use associated with that is higher than the proposed new 72 or 73 multifamily units. So, yes.
Okay. And then, I was looking for the 89-unit AOD project. I couldn’t find it here. They had some, perhaps you could point out where-
Commissioner Lodge, are you referring to the 3885 State Street, that project?
I-
And the reason that is not on the list is because they’ve had some building permits issued already.
Oh, okay.
So, they were not on the approved list anymore. They got moved to the building permit-issued status.
So, they then, someone just spoke about that project, but they would not be affected then? Is that correct?
Commissioner Lodge, it depends on the effective date of the ordinance and whether it applies to projects that are already in the plan-check process. Their project is in the plan-check process. They’ve received one round of comments, but they don’t have a building permit issued for the new units. So, the decision on the effective date and what projects it applies to would matter quite a bit to them.
Oh, okay. Okay. Now, they did have, obviously had some use on the property to start with. It would be interesting to know what the difference would be if you happened to, do you happen to have that, because of the efficiencies of the-
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Lodge, that project is on the building permit-issued list, and it’s estimated that it will have 9.53 net-new acre-feet-per-year of water demand.
Okay. Despite the fact that they’ll be using all the latest-
Correct. Yeah, because it’s so many more units than the existing development.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Higgins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question for Ms. Weiss. You mentioned that back in the previous drought period, that staff had a hard time doing site-by-site or actual, maybe an analysis based on actual water usage. And so, I can appreciate what’s being set up here to use a factor based on, well, use a water-demand factor rather than actual usage. But my question is, back then, were there any discussions, or were staff able to, let me back up. If we’re able to use a water-demand usage number as it relates to a project going forward or being exempted under a potential new ordinance, how would that be enforced?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Higgins, I just want to clarify my statement about the prior drought. It was very labor-intensive, and there was quite a bit of variability in looking at historical water records and understanding what the land uses were over long periods of time. But we actually did develop water-demand factors. Mr. Ferguson referred to that in the late 80s. Those were the factors used to measure the projected land development. So, you looked at the historic water use for the historic purposes, and to determine whether or not the new land use was going to be more or less water, we did use these water-demand factors that were developed in the late 80s. So, does that answer your question?
Maybe you can give us an example of what that would maybe look like today. Because I can appreciate staff wanting to use a factor to avoid, you know, a different set of circumstances for different applicants. But I can also appreciate, if we’re going to head this direction to limit building permits, there’s also a substantial investment in terms of hundreds of millions of dollars that are at stake here. So, I want to be careful about how we proceed based on a factor and not short-change an applicant that’s already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars, collectively millions, on building permits today or projects being deemed complete today.
Well, the thinking is, is that the city’s water-demand factors are based on actual city water, customers’ water use by land-use category. And so, we are using an average number. So, take, for example, a restaurant. We have many restaurants in Santa Barbara. And so, if one restaurant were to close and want to propose, you know, 20 new units, and that particular restaurant happened to be a really low-water user, they may not have the historical water use to support the new 20 dwelling units. However, another restaurant down the street may have, for whatever reason, the type of cuisine, its popularity, had a much higher water use. And so, should that person decide to close the restaurant and want to build the 20 units, their historical water use would allow it. The restaurant owner, property owner, that had the high-water use comes through the process, and they get their permits. The lower-water-use restaurant might think about increasing their water use, because that would be beneficial to them to then later propose development. And I could tell you that people in the community were very concerned about how water, historical uses, and things were being spiked during the drought. We got calls all the time that people thought they were running hoses and doing different things to increase their historical water use. This can get very, very difficult, this arena that we’re talking about. And I think there is actually some benefit to applying the factor, as I’ve just given you an example, both historic, you know, existing land use and proposed land use, because it somewhat levels the playing field, because these are really difficult decisions. And should the council adopt something like this, there’s no question in my mind, someone would be impacted. In order for the city to save this water, someone is being precluded from moving forward with their development. So, that’s inherent in the question that we’re examining here, certainly.
So, basically, water-demand factor is enforceable by staff. I mean, is that what we’re saying, we’re not talking about a condition of approval on a project that limits the water usage. It’s inherently associated with a factor that’s being used to approve the development?
That’s correct. It’s an assumed factor, and so, and it’s consistently applied. And so, once that project is determined to be able to move forward because it’s less water use, like take, for example, the Sandman Project or a similar project like that, we’re not going to go back and only meter out that exact amount that we anticipated that they used. They’ll get their building permit, they’ll build the condominiums, and they would become part of the existing community’s land use. And this determination would be made, you know, prior to the issuance of a building permit, or at any time, someone could come in and we could determine, carefully reviewing what’s on-site and what’s proposed. We could readily give them the demand factors that are involved. Or, we could do the way that we did it before. It certainly is possible to do it that way. And that’s a consideration that you all may want to discuss further, have the council consider if there’s interest in doing that sort of approach again. That’s case-by-case historic water assessment.
If I might, Chair Thompson, members of the commission, you’re actually touching on one of the fundamental problems of lawmaking, and that is, how much certainty do you want to have versus how much flexibility do you want to have? Certainty is efficient, as Ms. Weiss described. We can know from the demand factors what our water use is going to be judged to be, but it can be harsh. It might not fit appropriately. Case-by-case decision-making is very fair. It is tailored to the individual circumstances, but it’s also very expensive, because in essence, you have a little hearing for each case, and it ends up being very costly. So, the balance usually runs this way. Certainty is efficient and harsh. Case-by-case is maybe more just, but very expensive. And you see that dichotomy in all forms of lawmaking, and that’s what you’re confronted with. The other thing I wanted to add, while I have the mic open, is that, back in response to Commissioner Schwartz, with respect to when the latest time in the process is that you can impose these regulations, California law is very harsh against property owners and developers. The so-called AVCO rule says that until you’ve got all of your permits obtained in good faith and substantial completion of the project, new laws can apply. So, typically, that means a building permit plus some substantial performance on the project. You could impose these restrictions as late as that. Staff is arguing that you not do that, and that you look at earlier points in the process, and you have your choice of where earlier in the process to impose these regulations. Got it. Okay, Commissioner Pujo.
Thanks. Couple of questions. Stormwater quality plans, that’s my first question. Is this, maybe you could explain, give a slight overview of that, because where I’m going with this question is, there are different tiers and requirements for needing to provide a stormwater quality plan on a project. But I believe that that doesn’t necessarily restrict the area of new landscaping, does it? It just requires that that landscaped area be done with certain approaches.
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Pujo, you are correct. We have the three tiers of compliance with our stormwater management program. Tier three, which are most of the projects that the Planning Commission sees, it requires compliance with several measures for water treatment and water retention. You have to treat basically every square-inch of the site so that all water is treated, and then you have to retain a one-inch storm event. And so, various projects do handle that different ways. But what we have found is, for most of the, you know, infill developments, mixed-use or projects near the downtown on, you know, relatively small lots, they’re using every square-inch of their landscaping in order to meet that stormwater requirement. So, there isn’t a lot of extra area for them. There are other ways to do it. You can have underground tanks and things like that. But generally, that’s what we’ve seen, is for those projects, they really rely on all of their landscaping to treat the stormwater. So, in estimating the potential reduction from a landscape deferral, we took that into consideration, that tier-three projects would use their landscape area for that compliance.
In terms of water usage, is that an impediment to lowering the percentage of water devoted to landscape?
Commissioner Pujo, yes, it would be. Our stormwater management program is a requirement of the state, and so, compliance is required. And so, deferring that part of the landscaping, we felt would be a significant issue and something that we really were not able to even do.
But there would be, then, some cases that would necessarily have a higher water use for that area than if you didn’t need to require, say, tier-three? Is that more or less?
Commissioner Pujo, that is correct. And it depends on each project. You know, some use permeable pavers to get to that treatment. And so, it’s a case-by-case thing. But in order to make an estimate of how much water we saved, we had to make some assumptions and broad categorizations.
Okay. And I have some questions about the administrative procedures for postponing installation of landscape plant materials. My first question is, taking the draft process attachment kind of at face value, you’re talking about deferring plantings in new construction projects. But isn’t it the case that it could be something that actually isn’t construction, unless you’re using that term very broadly? So, if someone came in to redo a landscape plan or install landscaping on a golf course or such, would you consider that a construction project?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Pujo, it depends on the case. For example, a single-family home, generally, they can redo their landscaping without any permits from the city. It’s not something that we get involved in. It’s these new projects that have development where we review the landscape plan and make sure it complies with our ordinance. Redoing a golf course, something like that, would be a different sort of project. So, that’s something where we would be involved in that and review it, either because it’s subject to Architectural Board of Review or some other reason. So, commercial projects are very different than a single-family project. Multifamily developments, generally, their landscape plans are something that’s approved, and we have a record of it. And so, if they were to come in, then that’s something that the city would be reviewing.
So, this, this set of procedures basically applies to all new development. So this, this set of procedures basically applies to all new development projects that require permits, basically?
Commissioner Pujo, that is correct.
Okay, okay, that's what you intended by that, to cast a broad net, not a subset of certain projects? I had questions about, basically, some of the provisions that had specific mention in this draft. For example, landscape plantings required as conditions of approval, mitigation measures, restoration plans required to be installed, those in particular. So those would be exceptions to doing this, and is it a, kind of a blanket exception? Or would you look at them case-by-case? Because there's a lot of standard conditions that come to us, and maybe the project didn't completely hinge on one of those as a specific point for either approval or denial of the project, they're just standard conditions. So how would you deal with those? But yet, they were adopted in, right?
Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Pujo, that is actually something that we were thinking about, and that was kind of a difference between the draft landscape guidelines and what your staff report said, because we did strike out the conditions of approval exemption, for the very reason that you're saying, because we do have a standard condition that says all trees removed should be replaced on a one-for-one basis. And so, those aren't necessarily the types of conditions that we were talking about. Those are trees that we would not necessarily want installed at this time. We'd want to wait until we had, we were out of the drought condition. So that's something that we would want to word very carefully, so that it was very clear that it was not for standard conditions of approval, only for ones truly required in order to approve the project.
Okay, because it seems that would kind of defeat the purpose. Okay, and then, the procedures talk about projects under construction, approved projects without building permits, projects that don't have design review approval yet, and then the last one's enforcement, sort of a different kind of category, I suppose. But these, this would actually apply not only to projects that were basically in the hopper, so to speak, so far, but it would apply to anyone who comes in six months from now that you haven't heard from yet, would all be subject to this, is that right?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Pujo, that is correct. Anyone would be subject to this if it were adopted as a mandatory regulation, including projects that aren't finished yet, that are under construction, and hadn't installed their landscaping. This program, or a similar version, was implemented during the last drought in the late 80s, early 90s, and that's what we modeled it after, but based on current trends.
Okay. And other than the mention of projects already probably approved, at least, that have adopted mitigation measures, what I don't see in here is for discretionary projects that require SEQA review, anything that talks about how you are going to treat potential impacts of increased net water use. I mean, is there any additional review, in environmental review, that would create mitigations on some of these projects because, for example, their landscape plan uses a higher water use than a certain threshold, or something like that?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Pujo, all new projects are subject to our water-efficient landscaping ordinance, so that means that a maximum of 20% of the site could have plants that aren't considered water-efficient. So in that regard, I think that really addresses those, what could be anomalies. But when we're doing our SEQA review, it is based on the water information that we have in the general plan update, final EIR, and so, that document tells us that there is adequate water, you know, generally. Of course, we're in an extreme drought situation. This is, you know, we've even extended out our drought planning period because of the current circumstances. So it wouldn't necessarily change our SEQA review.
So moving on to the suspension of the building permits with net new water use. I understand the dilemma about which formula you use case-by-case, or kind of a standard formula, but my questions have to do with the exemptions. So if this were to take place, you have these exemption categories, 100% affordable housing units, projects for essential governance services, social benefit, and public health projects, and then you have some, a couple of more minor ones, and then the last one, the T-Fire rebuilds. Again, is this a blanket kind of exemption? It seems to me there should be some case-by-case review of whether it really fits those categories, because those categories are very broad, like especially, for example, projects for essential services, government function projects. There could be a variety of public works projects, and maybe some really shouldn't qualify. As a matter of fact, I'm not even sure if all public projects require permits, do they? What would it capture?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Pujo, this list is just pretty general at this point. In working with the city attorney and the discussions we've had with the council, we will need general direction from which we would then prepare more specific, you know, language. I can tell you that the exemption list isn't a unique thought on the part of staff currently. This reflects years of drought moratorium and water use restriction ordinances that were in place in the 90s, and these were similar, these were the type of categories that were found to be exempted projects in past. And I know that this commission asks specifically about affordable housing, and what was our position on that, because there's something specific in state law as well. Many public works projects do not require building permits, and they're not necessarily water-intensive uses, like a bridge, for example. But there are public facilities, again, many times, it could be a simple repair and maintenance of an existing facility, and that would not be subject to this. But let's say, for example, in the West Side Community Center, when they're updating the kitchen there, they determined that expanding a wing to create more dishwasher space, and da-da-da-da. You know, you could have something like that come up, where existing city facilities or other facilities do need to expand for some given reason. And that was the thought. I agree, it's very broadly stated right now, and it would need further definition.
Further definition, okay. And then, looking at both of these items, the deferral of the landscape installation and the section in your staff report on the suspension of building permits with net-new water use, a couple of things. One is, this, let's just try this on for a second, say, this suspension of building permits occurs, what would happen to the project expiration timelines for these projects? Would those also be suspended, and then would they be able to pick up where they left off when the drought is declared over? And then also, for example, in terms of the deferral of the landscape plans, so an applicant would be required to come in and show the modified lesser landscape plan compared to what was required in the project approval. But is there going to be some assistance to them when they bring that in, or is there someone with landscape design experience that's going to check over those plans as they submit them?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Pujo, I'll start with your first question, and projects would have their approval timelines told during this permit moratorium. We have several sections in our ordinance that already say that, so it's automatically built in. We'll have to research to make sure every case would be covered. If not, we can certainly address it in the ordinance to make sure that that is the case, because that would be the intent. In terms of the landscape plans, we do have landscape architects on all of our design review boards, and all of these projects are subject to their review. So it would be those landscape professionals that could assist if someone were concerned about how to design this interim landscape plan. But we anticipate that it will be fairly straightforward, that there'll be some type of ground cover that doesn't require watering, and that's what gets put in place of, for example, new trees, new shrubs, that sort of thing.
I could see that with a project that's just coming forward from the start, but these projects that are already, yeah, yeah.
We haven't discussed exactly how it would occur, but I think that that's something that we would want to assist them with as much as we can, make it a simple process, not something that's difficult, but just enough that we can get the documentation that we need, and the ability to then have it installed once the drought is over.
Right, I think some assistance would be in order, okay. And then, the last section I have questions on is Section D Additional Alternative Options. These address what can we do, basically, with existing development? I think it's the only section that really speaks to existing development, and some of the items mentioned in here are expansion of gray water systems, people coming in for fixture, some incentives, let's say, for fixture retrofist, that's the way I read it, anyway. And I'm just, I'm curious and somewhat disappointed, because I think there's more we can do in that area, and I would like to see that particular area expanded. And so I don't quite understand why you think that this would be a significant increase in construction costs, when really, that's where we get it, education and, basically, evolving in the way that we use our water supplies on an ongoing basis that would hopefully then live beyond the drought and become our everyday practice. And, I mean, it's really a shame, because when you look back to the last drought, and now here we are again, talking all over again about watering at night, and, you know, some different measures that we were all, became very accustomed to in the last drought, and then quickly forgot, and then starting over again now. So these kinds of things, I think, are underrepresented in this approach, and I'm curious as to why more attention isn't being paid to some of those items.
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Pujo, for many of the building code-related items, the primary reason is because in order to implement them, we would need to go through a pretty intensive review process, have it vetted with the public, and these are items that the state is already considering. And so, when our building official was looking at some of these ideas, his concern was that it would take us quite a bit of time, and the state wouldn't be very far behind us, and it would, you know, perhaps be easier for everyone to implement them as part of the state updates, rather than trying to create our own system ahead of that. But there are certainly things that we could, you know, continue to look at, to see if they'd be appropriate.
And I imagine there's different variations on things that would be more simple to implement and things that would be less simple to implement, and I just think that we're kind of putting all of that in one, sweeping all that into one corner. So that's something I'll be making another comment on later. Okay, those are my questions, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. To follow up on a couple of questions, I guess, on the 2009 standards that were set up for the water use. Did that predate effectively when the measurements were done and calculated? Did that predate some of the California Green Building Code initiations and updates, which have gotten, let's say, more restrictive on energy and water since their inception?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Campanella, that's a good question. The data, the water use data for that study was 2006 and 2007, as I recall, and I'm pretty sure that that's going to predate certainly the latest round of green building, California Green Standards and all that. So that means that we'll get to do another one of these sometime in the near future, probably aligned with general plan update or something like that, to try to keep them current. But it's representative of the things that are on the ground now, and that's part of what these factors are used for as well, things that are already built, as well as things that are proposed.
Okay. Just a follow-on question, if I can, and I don't know if this, if it's a building department question, when somebody comes in with a set of plans, and they have all their consultants' reports, for example, sound and everything else that's required, is there a report that shows water efficiency or water use as part of the plans that get approved?
Two aspects there. One is the plumbing equipment that's attached to the building, that's part of the plan check review, it's part of, and it's required to meet standards, not only statewide standards, but those other particular items that the city has adopted to sort of enhance the California Plumbing Code. And outdoor, we have a progressive and frequently updated set of landscape standards that looks at plant-type areas allowed, weather-based irrigation control, constantly moving to improve that standard.
So some, one of the items we're talking about is deferring installation, but you're also looking at the end game about what's going to be installed. Is it drought tolerant? Is the irrigation efficient, et cetera, as part of the plan check review?
It would have to be installed per those standards, even if it's been deferred.
I guess just another follow-on, follow-on, another follow-on question to that is, the city, and everyone should be congratulated, participates, is doing a very exceptional job on outreach, to let existing homeowners know what they can do, what's expected, and we're seeing results. Whether items are in the current code or not, are some of the suggestions that are being made that might not be code item, that are being made to existing homeowners, are they also working their way through, say, suggestions to new buildings to implement as well?
Yes, if I understand the question correctly, besides codes and standards, we also have a very active sort of encouragement approach, to make sure people are aware of the situation, aware of what they can do. And Ms. Ward is our conservation coordinator, and she's largely responsible for the press releases that you've been hearing about in the media, and they've been really helpful in getting the word out to people.
So without a measurement, we don't have a measurement at this time, but people, new plants are doing things that are not just water-efficient, but energy-efficient, sound-efficient, fenestration, a lot of things are going on to comply with the code and even do more. Without getting into things, as I see here, which I appreciate, things that may not have a cost benefit. The cost may be more than actually the results would generate. So those evaluations have been done as well. So the items that are being recommended and are being done are being incorporated efficiently, I guess, both from a cost standpoint, as well as a result standpoint on the buildings. So right now, for staff, this isn't being taken into account when we look at the utilization of water. I mean, there's calculations that are done, there's expectations on a particular project. So if someone is doing what's required, I guess, or more, there's, because of the way we're calculating, it's based on historical calculations, not based upon what they're currently maybe doing, either required or voluntarily. Correct, okay, thank you. Let's see, the definition, a question for staff, the definition of net new, that's totally based on use that's, not, it's not based on a vacant lot, but it's based on use that's currently on the ground versus what's going to be proposed, use and size.
Mr. Campanella, that's correct. We basically subtract the existing from the new. So if you have a single-family home, and you tear that down, and you want to build three condos, you would get credit for that single-family water demand factor.
Okay, based on the current parameters that we have.
Correct.
And there's no regard to, for example, you're recommending perhaps affordable housing be exempt. So I would guess on affordable housing, knowing what the housing authority goes through and how that and how they select—the people they select are already here, right? Their outreach—I'll call it outreach, not prejudicial, but their outreach are people who are already here, already living somewhere in town, and perhaps not living in a place that has the same efficiency than if they were moving into a new place that the Housing Authority would do. So this is being counted as new, even though the same people are already here, and they may be less efficient in their living environment than they're going to be. Is that correct?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Campanella, that's correct. And it's because those units that they're vacating would be occupied by new tenants. So those units aren't necessarily going away. So that's why there's not credit for those units.
You don't get credit for the fact that you're not really adding any—
Unless they were building on the same site and tearing down units and building new. But if they're building a new project—
Or if they were in overcrowded conditions, let's say.
Right. We're basing it on unit count, not necessarily living conditions.
Not the current situation. Okay. Cost benefit. I think those are my questions. I won't have comments in a bit, but—
Thank you. Commissioner Jordan, again.
Thanks. I just have one follow-up, follow-up, follow-up question. In that conversation that's going back and forth about state law treating developers harshly, in that when you place a new law, they could be liable. Remind me how we treat people with whatever we're calling Measure E, square footage now? That basically is a very lenient treatment of a developer, right? If there was a run on Measure E allocation because it was coming to an end, that's literally just get in the lobby before it's used up and put in a piece of paper, right?
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Jordan, yes, for our growth management ordinance, there are categories available, and it is basically a first-come-for-served process, but—
But there's not really a—you don't have to be to a certain part. It's just the initial, in-the-door—if application's the right word—that gets you that entitlement to be there if you're there on time, right? It's not entitlement. It's the wrong word. I understand. But literally, you just have to get in the door to put in something before the end of the total allocation to do it. You don't have to be along at certain steps in the process. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Jordan, I just want to clarify, because there's several categories of non-residential square footage. So they're treated each a little bit differently. So, for example, if someone were requesting square footage from the community benefit category, there is an action that needs to take place. They need to apply, make that request, and then City Council needs to actually allocate the square footage. So that's more than just coming in the lobby. So that's a—there's a process that needs to take place in an action. There's also minor addition categories, where each legal lot is allocated 1,000 square feet of minor addition. That's special and unique to their lot, so they're not competing with other people for that square footage.
Is there a category that's close to my description?
Addition, right. So then there's a small addition, which is only applicable to certain areas of town, where there is a cap annual allocation of that square footage each year. We—back in the beginning days of Measure E, we did have some years where there were actual, you know, lines of people out the door, competing for that square footage. We haven't had that situation in quite a while, but there is still a cap that's set on that each year.
And that particular type of description of the process is a leniency that we grant procedurally here to not be the harshness of the state law, where we could go in and change a rule, change a law, change something, and retroactively apply it to people who weren't in line, sort of thing. Is that—I'm trying—to what I'm trying to look for is if you—if you have a discussion later that goes towards some type of restriction and process on new development and where people are in the process. Don't we already have some history of allowing, you know, my phrase, somebody that's just been in the door to be in the door, type of thing, in this type of situation that I'm pointing out?
Well, maybe Ms. Wees can add to that. But when you're referring to in the door, it would be most applicable to the small addition category.
Okay.
They could come in to the planning counter and submit an application and say, "I want to add my 2,000 square feet of small addition to my property." And then, right, for that year, I believe, and I'm not familiar with the details of exactly when that gets taken out of the pool. I think when we hit a certain point of people requesting that and we're reaching the cap, then we'd look at that.
But that type of choice could be one of the choices made in a situation where you were going towards actually limiting new development, right?
Yes. Chair Thompson and Commissioner Jordan, to your last point, that question is certainly an open question in considering how possible regulations could be applied. And they have—we have had numerous ordinances adopting new rules where we said, "Any pending project status." Typically, that meant maybe you'd been to the ABR once. So we had an application on hand. We've had the council adopt rules that exempted the new rule to any project that even had filed a basic application of any type. Then we have also adopted—had council has adopted rules where they determined that it would apply to any project that had not yet been approved, or had not yet received a building permit. Those points, as Mr. Cullen mentioned, the City Council has made decisions about how the ordinances apply along that path. But in general, your comment about the city being fairly liberal, with an application in the door, being able to proceed, I think is generally true, that—
And is that the phrase I'm looking for, then? Any pending process status?
Yes.
Would that be the phrase?
Right.
Okay.
Staff, I can tell you, has typically not applied that phrase to a project that has received PRT, pre-application review. We consider that to be a discussion. It's a meeting. You know, you do fill out a form and pay a certain amount of fee, but it's not really an application by definition. It is a pre-application. So typically, we only assign the phrase or term pending to a project that has what we call an MST, a master application number. But that can be done very easily by submitting for your first conceptual review at a design board.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz, another question?
Mr. Chair, yes, one new question's come to mind. Because I attend the monthly Water Commission hearings as the Planning Commission's liaison, at last count, we have eight city wells that are under, I'll just say, rehabilitation because of various malfunctioning issues. So I'm wondering, perhaps either Ms. Ward or Mr. Ferguson could speak to, if we had all of our wells up in fully operation—and I know there's a panoply of efforts being done to do that now, in hearing from Mr. Hagmark recently—if we had them all operational, would that preclude us from needing to consider some or all of these new regulations that we're discussing today and that staff has proposed?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Schwartz, I don't think that it would. I think the goal here is to get the input we need from the commission of public about the approach we would take to the extent additional regulations on development and water use are necessary. We have made progress in getting several of those wells back online. It's more a matter of the capacity we have to use them at any time of the year in terms of the demand. That plays a factor. So I think you would want to separate that issue. In other words, this goal, this effort here, is about the regulations and how to best implement them, based on the stage that we find ourselves at the end of this spring period, when we know more about what our drought condition's going to be.
And I guess why I'm bringing them together, the topics together, is because, to me, when deemed necessary, you know, additional regulations, when deemed necessary, directly relates to our overall water supply. And if we have eight or more wells in the city that are not functioning, and if we could get them functioning optimally, then my question would be, what additional yield does that provide? And would then that preclude us from needing to penalize applicants coming to the city at whatever stages we deem as pending or complete, et cetera? Because we're looking at some very significant adverse impacts to our community in considering development and landscaping regulations. So I feel that I need to press for this understanding, and that we—it's important to have this conversation.
Thank you for the clarification on that. I think the answer is that we're moving forward with developing and reactivating those wells to the fastest extent we can, because we know we're going to need them, and we never know when the next one's going to go down. So that's happening independently. And as far as groundwater as a source of supply, it's really only one of our multiple sources of supply. So the picture changes dramatically, depending on different assumptions about state water entitlement, delivery availabilities through a state water project, the D-SAL production, things like that. So it's all part of the same package.
It's on my mind, because, you know, unlike Montecito, which almost has no groundwater at this point in time, we've been fairly fortunate, relatively speaking. And so I would be—I'm cautious about moving—moving into a place of recommending any significant new regulations or restrictions if, in fact, we are rehabilitating some of our important resources, let's say, local resources, that could give us the flexibility Mr. Cullen referenced. You know, how do we get that flexibility without impeding the community's ability to bring development to us and to, you know, to support the right kind of development? So I guess there's no more conversation today to be had, but I'll be continuing to fact-find around this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I might just add, that's certainly the context in which the council is considering this. So I think you can take that as a given, that the City Council, based on the water plan procedures, as well as their monthly drought updates, and when this topic has come up, the council wants to be very deliberate in understanding the overall supply, the reliability of the supply, and the need to impose any type of restriction on water use in the community. So I think it's safe to have the presumption that this sort of regulation would only go in place when the council considers it necessary, based on all their knowledge of the water supply situation. And you could—you could pass that on, as well as your presumed understanding under which any recommendations would follow. Likewise, if it was, well, we assume these would be unnecessary, then they wouldn't be done. So I think that's the context we're in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pujol, another question?
Yes, thank you. I just had a follow-up question. I have, basically, the inverse of that particular question, and that is, we're going through this process now and considering these measures, say, at the end of—or whatever time you choose, but the end of this particular water year that we're in, we're still continuing to be in a drought or severe drought situation, then we would end up coming back and having these conversations again. Isn't that right? That we would look at other measures, try to figure out other things that we could do. This won't be our only opportunity here with this discussion, to come up with a plan for the remainder of the drought.
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Pujol, I think that would really depend on the council's direction to have additional discussion at the commission. In all honesty, when I was at their—I don't like that phrase. I'm going to take that back. When we were at the City Council last, staff's recommendation was to refer this to the Planning Commission for this very discussion we're having. And I was questioned by a council member to, why would we refer this to the Planning Commission? It's not a standard situation that we're in, where clearly the commission has a delegated authority, responsibility. The council's discussion on this topic is very complex, with a lot of considerations, and they did want more information on these numbers, and to have your body, who is more familiar with the projects and what's involved with them, hold the hearing. And that's what we suggested would be certainly of value. We have done noticing today. Fortunately, we're having some input from the development community, and that's helpful. I can't tell you for sure at what point you would definitely have another conversation. It's just not that clear to me. The idea also that staff has had about these regulations is that, for example, in the landscape deferral, it's, you know, start as an optional, move to a mandatory. Start with a restriction on new building permits, but allow people to complete the planning process. It could be, don't even start the planning process. You know, it could change over time, as you're suggesting. So the fuller discussion we have of these options with you all today is helpful, to see whatever the council decides might be necessary at any point in time. We're trying to think of it that way, as a staged, you know, strategy-by-strategy sort of set of possible regulations. So really encourage you to think about it, you know, as broadly as possible, that way.
Okay, I've got a few questions. Not to follow up on follow-ups, but this issue about water demand factors, I understand why staff would want to use a parametric way to calculate water demand based upon simplicity and equitable application across the board. But I also know that, for example, a 75-year-old building compared to a new building that would take its place is going to have used more water because of the old plumbing and the old appliances. So have you ever considered, or have you come up with any way to apply the age of the replaced project to what's going in? Or are we just stuck with using across-the-board parametrics based upon the water demand study that was done five years ago, or whenever it was?
I'll start a response, but perhaps Mr. Ferguson will want to add. Again, these average demand factors do take into account those varying situations, projects that—and properties that are improved with inefficient water systems and those with efficient, which is the current case and would continue to be. You know, it's an average. It's a mix of all of those things.
I understand that.
So—
Talking about more getting down to the case-by-case basis.
Yes. And again, in the last drought, projects were able to proceed with this no net new water use on a case-by-case basis, in large part because the applicant would propose a lot of water-saving devices. And they were given credit for that, because they were going above and beyond requirements at that time. So it was a very involved process. But I just want to point out that the water savings from the drought last time was much greater by restricting new development, because the water demand factors built in then were much larger uses. As one speaker explained to you, today, in modern regulations, the new buildings, and you're saying the same thing, are much more efficient. So I just want to have that context, that we're not projecting very much water savings, because it's presumed already that any new development will have the water-conserving landscape plan and all the water conserving and energy requirements under the California codes. So it's just—historically, it was different, because they could save water that way. Now, anyone coming in needs to have this conserving requirement anyway.
And we can't get much more efficient. I mean, there's only so much you can do, unless you're going to manufacture water on-site with 1.2-gallon-per-flush toilets and so forth. There's not a whole lot you can do to improve the plumbing codes to make it more efficient.
Yes. So again, back to your question about, isn't it true that if someone came in with a historic, an older building with plumbing, fixtures, and water use history, and wanted to replace that building, they would—they would save water? Absolutely. And would that water savings then be considered as something to allow further development, for example? Not just replace the building, but maybe replace it with 10 new units in addition? That sort of program could certainly be recommended by this commission and considered by the City Council. And again, it's very much case-by-case, based on— And again, it's very much case-by-case based on net new water use. Yeah. Mr. Ferguson, is that...
I think that pretty well covers it. And that's one of the reasons why we're here, to get questions like that and help that form our further recommendations.
Okay. Sort of a little bit of a follow-on to that is the list of pending cases, status, some of those cases on there are more than 10 years old. I mean, we've got some on there that are 13 years old. When do they fall off the list? Surely, some of those with a 2002, 2003 date are not still active or could be made active.
Chair Thompson, we actually did go through the list to make sure that the ones that are on there are still valid. If you see a 2002 date, that's when they submitted to us, but maybe they didn't get their approval till 2004. And then the state started doing automatic two-year extensions of their map, and they've done several of those. So those maps have been, most of them are condo projects, the ones that you see that are still on that list. And so their approvals have been extended for many, many years beyond what we would normally see.
Some of the ones on there I know have been the subject of legal action and have, the proponents have withdrawn and gone bankrupt or whatever, and yet they're still being carried. I just was wondering how some of them might be inflating the numbers that are on there.
Commissioner Thompson, that's absolutely true. There are probably projects on here that we will never see come to fruition, but unless it's been formally withdrawn, as long as their approvals are valid, we left it on the list. Because it could be purchased and someone else could move that project forward.
Okay. A couple of, perhaps more simple questions. On the list of potential items is suspension of new pools. And I know that we've already got a restriction that new pools can only be filled to one-third. Now, could you explain how that one-third was derived? Because to me, it sounds like it's somewhat arbitrary. Maybe you save a little bit on the water filling, but you're still going to have the same evaporation. And if somebody can keep on filling it to one-third, you're not saving anything going forward. But also, who's going to determine whether it's one-third or one-half or what? And kind of another follow-on is, doesn't the city incur some liability if somebody falls into a partially-filled pool and gets injured?
Chair Thompson, I'm glad you asked the question. The one-third applies to existing pools and the desire of an owner to periodically dump water and replace it with what we call fresher water, lower salt content, to keep the salt from getting beyond the point where it can be suitable for pool use. The goal of that regulation was to essentially force people to stop and think about whether they really need to drain the pool completely or whether a 33%, a third of the pool would be enough to keep the water quality within that acceptable range.
So the intent is not to fill by more than one-third, it's to drain one-third off and replace?
Yes. The regulation allows up to a third without any kind of further action. If they have repairs that are required and that would require draining the pool, that requires authorization from the Public Works Director to do that. And that, this does not apply at all to new pools until they're built and filled, and then they come under that one-third per year.
So it's just kind of an arbitrary number that seemed reasonable, one-third?
Well, it reflects the fact that we know that evaporation concentrates salts in the pool and eventually that can cause problems on the pipes. It can be a problem with equipment warranties and things like that. And we wanted to recognize that, but compress the amount of water that's lost that way and limp on through for the next several years to try to get past the drought point that we're at.
Okay. One other relatively simple question. It's discussing about potential other zoning changes that could be put in, and that's rain barrels. Why would we have to have a zoning ordinance change to put a rain barrel on setback since it's not a permanent structure? I mean, if somebody sits a barrel underneath their downspout, it's not a permanent structure, it could be removed at any time. Why would that require a change to the zoning ordinance?
Commissioner Thompson, the way our zoning ordinance is written, you cannot store anything in your setbacks, and so that would be considered storage, similar to any other thing that you might put in your setbacks. And it may occur all over town, but it's not...
It may occur.
...permitted. And so this would be a way to have homeowners find a legal way to install these, especially if it's something, you know, that's hooked up to the gutters. So it's not, it is actually a part, becomes a part of the structure.
Anybody else have any other questions before we go to comments? Okay, I'm open to comments to staff unless staff's got anything else you want to tell us before we go over our comments. Okay, Commissioner Jordan.
Excuse me. Chair Thompson?
Sure.
I did have one additional comment back on the question of the, as you describe it, parametric approach versus case-by-case. When you're, one of the ways we handle that problem when we're drafting is to use the parametric approach, but to have a safety valve that would say if someone could demonstrate, I don't know, maybe more than 50% variance, that you could have a case-by-case analysis. So there are ways to draft that with a safety valve to prevent egregiously unfair situations from coming up.
Sure. And if I could inject, to counter what Ms. Wee said before, to prevent people spiking, you could have all of the historic data that they present had to be before the enactment of the ordinance or some date that was prior so that people couldn't then go in and turn all the hoses on for two months and say, okay, we have this water usage last month. I mean, that seemed to be one of your concerns. You could certainly preclude that by having an effective date. Okay, Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So do some general comments and then I'll go through the items one by one. First, I just want to say, as somebody who is really pushing staff to get this item in front of us and pretty much scoffing at, oh, you know, the foot acre use for new development is really small and said, I just don't believe that. I think you've kind of taken me to church and convinced me otherwise that really the consequence of new development historically is really rather miniscule in the overall footprint of our water use. And so I want to thank you for doing that work, putting together the report and putting that in front of me. And I think, you know, the knee-jerk reaction of me or anybody else that says, oh, no, we just can't have another toilet or another sink put in, I think you really need to look at these type of reports and come to a logical conclusion. That said, I think one of the big-picture flaws in the report is that it's all about demand and not about supply, that we haven't really put a finger on what our supply is going to look like or could look like, and then backed into that with how we want to handle our demand. And I have the nice little bar graphs that kind of show where we think we're going to go. I would tell you that every time that 20% conservation savings moves down, it's not really 20%. It's exponentially way worse than 20% because I've already saved my 20% last year and I'm sure as heck going to have a hard problem gaining another 20% the next year. I think some of the other numbers are really questionable. And I think it'd be worthwhile to go through a process of saying, what would we have to do to live with 10,000 acre-feet a year? And what would that mean, rather than saying, oh, we know what our demand's going to be like and let's talk about how we're going to try and get our demand down low, not knowing really what our supply is or what it's actually going to be. So I would like to see more of a conversation of what a target supply number would be and how our demand would fit into that number. The gentleman from Suzanne Elidge's office, one of his comments was, of course, we all want to sacrifice. I would pose to you, we're not sacrificing anymore. I think it's part of a new paradigm. We're past the point of we're going to sacrifice. I think in the future, we just have to get used to living with less water and it's not going to be a sacrifice anymore. I would be in favor of, as I get to these points, I'm not going to be in favor of any type of restriction on new development, whether it's for pools or new development. I think the numbers show there's no bang for the buck there. I am concerned when you look through the documents that you've provided or the ones that have come online recently that aren't in there on the large water users. And I don't, and to me, large is more than an acre or an acre and a half or two acre-feet a year. So a big water use. And I would be interested in having a discussion on what is that number that determines what a large water user is for a project? And then placing additional requirements on that project that have returns on their water use. So that could be mandatory landscape deferrals, that could be mandatory rainwater use for landscaping, mandatory graywater use, all those type of things that would drive the large water users down from their water use. That's where it seems to be the economies can be made in the bang for the buck in gaining some of that water back. So in response to your points, I'm in favor of a deferral of landscape installation. I think you're on the right path for, I could support also a mandatory one at any time. I would prefer maybe, just like I said, if you chose a threshold for a project water use, that maybe that becomes a mandatory landscape deferral. One caveat to that is I would hate to include what was going to be trees in a landscape program in a landscape deferral. I would actually prefer to call out that the trees would still go in, but the ground cover shrubbery would be deferred. I think every year you lose, every year you lose the tree, you lose a growth of that tree. And I think trees in particular are important enough to keep putting in where we're going to have them in and get their life started. And if that requires, if you're in a deferral program, that requires that you run a separate drip line for a tree or set of trees, I think trees are worth the effort for that. Suspension of new pools, I don't, I think looking at the numbers there too, I don't even think that's a credible path to go. I think there's no bang for the buck there. Suspension of building permits, again, I don't, I think you're never going to get there, but I wouldn't support getting there. Again, the only thing I would, I could support is some type of better water management on-site for what would be determined large water projects. Part of the conversation earlier before is about the stormwater management plan. And I just want to make clear what I think about the stormwater management plan. That's all about keeping stormwater from leaving your property. It has actually no actual relationship to use for landscaping. It could, because there's a palette of things or best management practices that you can pick among, and staff will then say you've complied with this tier. But you could also ignore all of those and put in a detention pond and ignore your landscaping and still be watering your landscaping while you're just taking your stormwater into detention pond. I think one of the loops that needs to be closed there, even though it's not part of the stormwater management plan requirements, is the retention of that stormwater and the routing to your landscape requirements. And what that looks like, I don't know, but it just seems criminal to me to say, we're keeping the stormwater from going where stormwater usually goes, but we're not using that stormwater for what we know is a deficiency in water supply for our landscaping needs. And how that would all interplay, that's a whole nother discussion, I think. And then your discussion on zoning regulations as regards to what I would call water storage, not water barrels, I think that's an immediate yes. I think the quickest you can go to that, you know, a couple of you have been over to my house, you know that every one of my gutters are at the front of the house because that's where they, that's where they always put them, or the downspouts at the front of the house and burrowed out to the street. And I think you ought to be more liberal in your language there because you actually talk about just water barrels, but I think you should expand that to specifically address water tanks, which aren't quite as pretty sometime as water barrels. I know it's architecturally pretty, but if I was doing it at my, and I've certainly looked into it, but if I was doing it at my house, I'd be looking into a low-profile tank that would be long and wide and tall and fit right up against the side of the house rather than a water barrel. Because I think there's lots of water to be caught there. And I think, you know, I think eventually you're going to have to grapple with this incorporation of water storage into new development standards. I think where, certainly where it's an empty lot, there is, you know, you reference here that it increases construction costs. Yep, it does, but so does going to look for new water sources for all of us. So, you know, if there's a qualification that it's an empty construction lot or if it's a knockdown of the whole thing, I think underground storage tanks for landscaping reuse and your landscaping are going to all have to be interconnected. And I just can't imagine that we're not going to be there in 10 years. And I think the earliest we get started on it, the best. So I think that's all my comments. I think you're going to hear some other comments on if you went to this or if you went to that. But I think for, my two big comments are on pools and new development is I just don't think there's, from what you've shown us, I don't think there's a bang for the buck on even moving towards a restriction there. And I would rather see some of the other things we've talked about, the work with the landscaping, the work on water storage, move globally, but at the same time, maybe those are areas to put on what would be considered a larger water use project going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to start with acknowledging and appreciating the Water Resources staff team, I'll call them, with Ms. Ward and Mr. Ferguson here today. I know firsthand how extensive and how exhaustive all of your efforts are, have been and continue to be across the full spectrum of water supply activities. The city has done a remarkable job in stepping up our community education and outreach, offering incentives. And I want to say that I'm more of a carrot versus a stick advocate, so I greatly appreciate and have heard favorable feedback from the community about that. So I think we just need to go full bore in that direction. And in general, that's my sort of philosophical orientation and policy orientation, which is to give the community, arm them with as much education and tools and incentives to shift towards a more water-wise community because to me, that's the new norm. I don't think we're going back. And I read that, you know, January in San Francisco, there was no rain, and that was the first time since the gold rush, there has been no rain in San Francisco in January. So I think we're looking at a new era, a new paradigm, as Mr. Jordan mentioned. So with that, I want to say that my general approach and the way I'm going to respond to everything is that I think there needs to be a shared burden and a balance in how we approach this. And I think that staff, and I appreciate that staff has been and support staff in being somewhat cautious and very thoughtful in the recommendations that have been provided to council and planning commission, that we're not rushing headlong into of policy changes that come from a feeling of anxiety or desperation, even though we, with eyes wide open, know what a drought means for us. We've been here before, but we're looking at a prolonged drought that's much more serious potentially. So with that, I'm going to move through our documents here and give you some specific feedback, not in any particular order, but basically just as they've been identified in our documents. First, go back over the swimming pool issue, page five of our staff report. I'm of two minds regarding swimming pools. And let me say that, you know, they're wonderfully luxurious things in California, and we're in a semi-arid climate, in my opinion. And so on the one hand, while quantifiably they don't represent a large water savings, we all know that, we acknowledge that, I think in this time and where we're asking our community to really sort of double down on water conservation, I feel that it's a luxury. And it doesn't, I'll say philosophically, move us in the direction that we're asking everybody to go, which is extreme water conservation. And then there's the practical issue or the impractical issue. And then there's the practical issue, or the impractical issue, which I have an issue with our current Stage Two drought regulations in this regard. This notion of only being allowed to fill current pools 30% with city water has not made sense to me all along, and I've raised this issue before, because for people who want to use their pool, they have to fill it 100% of the way. They're going to fill it 100% of the way. They are today, and what they do is they truck water in. And then that leads me to the notion of inequity. And I think that in a time where, for those who have the financial means to use all the water they want to use—and I don't want to single out any particular communities in our South County, but I think everybody knows what I'm going to be referring to, so I won't use the name—for those who can afford to do it, they're doing it today. And I think that's the other side of the ledger. There's conservation, there's restricting water usage, there's penalizing in this community for usage beyond a certain threshold, but that doesn't account for the other side of the ledger, which is only those with financial means get all the water that they want. And I am philosophically opposed to that. I don't think that as a municipality and as a city, as a government, we should be driving behavior in that way. Now, we haven't done that in the city, but I'm concerned in going too far with any regulations that would result unintentionally would result in only those with financial means getting all the resources they want, while those who have less financial means have to make significant sacrifices far beyond those with significant financial means. So that's my comment in that regard. So regarding pools, I'm going to be interested to hear from my colleagues about where most of them want to go with new swimming pools and the construction of new swimming pools. Okay, that's enough about pools. In terms of suspension of building permits, I'm going to kind of be a little more flexible, perhaps, in my thinking than Mr. Jordan, but let me just say, I'm not sure if the point of demarcation should be where we have an application having been determined complete, deemed complete, if that should be the demarcation point, so that beyond that, no new regulations restricting in the ways that we're discussing today would be applicable. I think to allow an applicant to go farther down the road, the permit road, so to speak, and then restrict them after time and financial investment has been made, but before construction, to me, that's too late. And I think that's not sending the right signal to our development community. So I would be concerned about pushing the point of—what do I want to call it? Implementation, enactment, farther than when an application's deemed complete. But again, I'm really listening to the community, because I'm not—I'm not a developer myself, and so I'm trying to be very open-minded and sensitive to that. Okay, now I'm on page seven of our staff report, the list of exemptions. And so I see that these bullet points, these categories, from staff's perspective, either represent those with minimal increase in water demand or those projects deemed a priority. I'm comfortable with each of the ones here, and I just want to add, the average unit density incentive projects, which everybody knows I'm strongly in support of, must be on this list for me to make a recommendation on the exemption. So, yes, did Ms. Weis?
Just for clarification, because—
Because you asked that we comment on that, right?
Yes, perfect. Average unit size incentive program is actually the new norm for all multifamily development. So we just need to be more clear if what you're suggesting is that any AUD project that is using the overlay, you know, for the higher density, or—because if you said average unit density projects should be exempted, that would mean any multifamily unit project, because that is the current standard.
You mean as opposed to the official test-related
Yes.
Average unit density programs, which we continue to try to delineate one category from another?
So your interest is that projects of a certain kind
Yes.
With a building multi-unit development in the city would be an exemption. So which kind of multi-unit development were you thinking?
Former and not the latter, if that's clear. It's the official AUD projects.
High-density or overlay?
Like the one that this gentleman is representing, who is here in the audience today, who came to speak to us.
Okay, that's high-density or overlay, I think.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Let me continue on here. Page eight of our staff report—oh, and I see Mr. Kulan has left the room, that's fine. I had asked earlier about prospectively or retroactively, and I'm almost surprised that legally, we're even talking about retroactive, but, you know, I'll let the city attorney's office confer with counsel on the legality of that. But I would just say, from a planning commission perspective, I am not supportive of any application of new regulations retroactively. Just on a basic, kind of fair and reasonable principle, that doesn't fly with me. So that's my opinion about—this is the second paragraph on page eight of our staff report. And by the way, on a prospective basis, that does align—I know we're not comparing ourselves one-to-one with either the Goleto Water District ordinances or the Montecito Water District ordinances, but in the Montecito Water District ordinance, it does state—this is page three of their ordinance 89—any new certification of water availability issued prior to the effective date of this ordinance, let's say we enact a new ordinance, shall be valid as issued. So prospective, that's where I'm coming from. I am very—I'm supportive of whether we call them rain barrels or rain capture systems. This is also on page eight of our staff report under zoning regulations. Everything we can do to incent and help the community go in this direction before—you know, walking right up to the line of imposed new regulations, I'm in support of. Page nine of our staff report, water use regulations. So with 50% of the city's water use going to landscaping, my main focus—and I think our main focus should be on the landscaping, and I think it was perhaps Chair Thompson who referenced that. There's a certain category of our water use that's for basic human need, and I think we can only do so much there, and we are doing really well. And Ms. Ward just is out there throughout the community, day in and day out, encouraging everything possible. And, you know, between 20 and almost 35% savings conservation in December is phenomenal. So I now think we need to turn our attention definitely to landscaping and water management in that arena. Now I'm going to go to our draft landscape deferral process document that we've been Let me say in general that to apply new compliance requirements, new monitoring and compliance requirements, concerns me in general, and I think about this and I try to be mindful with projects that come to the commission, because where there are new obligations for implementation of any aspect of a permit, of a project, landscaping or otherwise, requires compliance adherence, which means we need staff resources to follow through with investigation and compliance. And I know you've acknowledged that we would continue, I think Ms. Weis and Mr. Busk said, on a responsive or reactive basis, complaint basis, but at the same time, you know, I don't want to over-encourage our community to be monitoring the neighbors this closely, where everybody's checking to see who's watering on which days and who's not using their sprinklers properly. And, you know, it's one thing to ask for general neighborly cooperation, but I don't want to turn neighbor against neighbor, quite frankly, unintentionally, but if we have too many regulations that we ourselves are not proactively monitoring for compliance, I'm afraid it would go there. And so I would just ask staff to maybe go back to some of these compliance issues and ask yourself, what are we really getting ourselves into if we go in this direction? You know, I don't know if we're building a bigger compliance kind of mousetrap than we need to. Okay, I think I'm on the last page of—yeah, same thing, last page, so now I'm on—I guess it doesn't have a page number. We have one, two, four pages of this landscaping deferral process here again on, you know, installation of approved landscaping. So on both pages, the page three and page four, we have new compliance proposals. And while I think philosophically deferring a new landscape plan makes sense, then my question is, are our building inspectors trained on the details of reading and compliance issues pertaining to landscape plans? And are they going to go out, let's say, once a deferral order has been lifted, for lack of a better term, and now the property owner can implement their landscaping plan? How do we follow up with that? What is our monitoring and compliance of that? You see, I just think we're building such a big machine for ourselves to have to apply resources to, and I'm not sure in general with community, kind of winning the hearts and minds and behaviors of the community, if this is really the right approach. Although, again, philosophically, defer landscaping, that's water hogs, sure, that makes sense. So in closing, I'll say—so I'd like to hear from my colleagues. In closing, I'll say—so I've been thinking about this a lot leading up to today. You know, the physical beauty of Santa Barbara is what makes it so special. It's the iconic experience of Santa Barbara. So I'm trying to achieve a balance between the right visual aesthetics, which is beautiful landscaping, the right landscaping that supports the beauty, maintenance and sustainability of the beauty of Santa Barbara, and we also have landscaping that improves the environment and the public health of our community. So I certainly wouldn't want to be kind of foolish in saying no landscaping. So we need this balanced approach. I'm neither a landscape architect nor a developer, so I'm trying to come at this from a generalist perspective, but caring about finding a balance between the right landscaping at the right time, not shutting down our economy—we're just getting back on our feet, having gone through a horrible recession. So I'm sure—I'm very confident staff will find their way through putting together a plan that the city council can approve that is phased, that is balanced with a shared burden, not just one segment of our community or another, and that can allow staff and the council to put on pause, to pause any new phase of regulations if we really don't need to go there, which is why I asked about our wells, our city wells. And I think it's really important for the city water staff to be on top of all of these details—I know you are—but I mean, really sharpen your pencils, so to speak, when you go to council every month. Help them understand exactly at what point do we need to pull which trigger to move into the next phase, because, you know, the council has a lot to deal with, and this is not the singular item that they're rolling up their sleeves to wrestle with in as much detail as you are. So that's where staff's expertise—I'm really looking to staff to do that. So that's it for now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Pujol.
Thank you. May I premise this by saying that my viewpoints on these items are more or less aligned with Commissioner Jordan's and the overall basic bullet points, and then also on with Commissioner Schwartz as far as the monitoring goes, but I'll go through my points on these, put my spin on them. So the first one I'd like to tackle is the mandatory landscape deferral program. Simply put, a great big yes, we need to do this. We've already waited too long, in my perspective, from doing it. We've had plenty of examples here on the commission as projects come through, that while long-term and permanently, we want to see the landscaping plans on projects go forward, at the same time, there is a tug-of-war internally on maybe this isn't the year to actually install it. So I think that's already overdue, and it should be done right away. And I also think that the mandatory landscape deferral and any components that reduce any unneeded water use in exterior landscaping to the point where, generally speaking, even in non-drought years, we get that number of 50% water use down permanently, is the direction that we should be going. On some of the particular sub-items under mandatory landscape deferral, I think that new landscape plans, when they come in, deserve a higher level of scrutiny to assure that there's no new exterior water use applied versus the overall development water use, except what would be required by the stormwater quality plan, and that should be done during the drought. And I think we should divide the—basically the internal water use formula from the exterior water use formula and focus on no net water use for the exterior part. One of the options you provided was the possibility of requiring bonding or performance securities for some of the deferral. I'm not sure if we do that now, I'm a little unclear on that, but if we don't, it's pretty commonplace in other agencies, and I think for this particular purpose, it would go a long ways to resolve some of the follow-up monitoring for when we do come out of the drought, and all of a sudden you have a lot of condition compliance on landscape plans due for the next couple of years or some such thing. And so I do think that that would be warranted. I specifically talked about the mandatory landscape deferral proposals before mentioning anything about the idea of a voluntary landscape deferral, and that is because I am not in support of any more voluntary landscape deferral problems, is that we already have waited too long. I would suggest, and my proposal would be, just to move straight into the mandatory portion of that, and let's not fool around with postponing the inevitable there. I'm ambivalent about suspension of permits for new pools. Small disclosure, I have a small pool, but regardless of that, and aside from that, I can see the symbolic nature of continuing to do it and the reasons—the consistency reasons for paralleling the requirements on existing pools along with new pools. I understand all of that, and I could go either way on it, but what I am most drawn about is that every pool needs to have a cover, because I think that's the biggest bang for your buck in terms of reducing evaporation of pool water. And I didn't see an emphasis on that. Maybe we require it on all pools now, but maybe we need to require that they be closed when not in use, or—anyway, I think that anything else we can do in regards of maintenance of pool covers, requiring they be closed, assuring that they were installed, that sort of thing would be good. I also think that if we'd go the route of suspending pool permits—I understand the point about the hot tubs, they're usually covered, but I also—and I think we are ready—are prohibiting fountains to be filled, is that correct? You can't put water in your fountain right now?
There are restrictions on some fountains. Residential fountains right now are exempt.
Okay.
Indoor fountains are exempt. Fountains less than 25-square-foot area, I believe, are the definitions on that.
Okay. So because I think that it's such a small amount in terms of water savings for the category of pools overall, and like I said, I am ambivalent about it, if we do go forward to take that step with pools, it's basically—it's symbolic reasons and the visibility kind of reasons, I think we should also, at the same time, address fountains and open ponds, fish ponds and whatnot. I'm not sure exactly how to handle it, but those are other open bodies of water that have a lot of evaporation that I think should be included in that category. On suspending building permits— On suspending building permits, I don't think it's a workable solution for all the reasons that my other fellow commissioners that have commented have stated already, for the reasons of the economy, the reasons of just the difficulty in stopping a project midstream, the low bang for your buck really overall that it provides. But I would support suspending building permits for projects that have not yet come into the system, and that also have a substantial or substantial unmitigable and a sequo impact related to water. If we did that, I think you would need to exempt out essential services. But something that would capture the largest users that really have not gone far enough to conserve enough in terms of their water use, but no on any pending suspension of building permits. And then in terms of other water use regulations that are mentioned on page eight and nine, I guess it is, of the staff report, I'm supportive of all of that. I think it's got less attention than it should right now in the city, and I think we should very actively pursue all of those items and more, and include in there a continuing education program and the city's very good work in proactively providing rebates and going to property owners and customers who want an efficiency kind of assessment of their property. I took advantage of that last spring, and it has made a very noticeable difference in my water use. And I thought I had already been doing a good job, but it really lowered it even more. So, I think that that's a very important, permanent, long-lasting approach, those items. Okay? That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. I was recently going through old scrapbooks of mine during my time as mayor, and when I got through, I wondered how I survived the last drought, and the issues over the homeless. But the previous drought, people cut back by 45%, but we started at a much higher level than we did now, over 16,000 acre-feet of use per year. And people were wonderful. They would compete with themselves to see how little water they could use. Now, some of them would sign up with a Y and go take their showers there, but it was really wonderful the way the community responded. We did have water police. I don't recall any neighborhood hostilities as a result of them. That just seemed to be, you know, it just helped assure that people did save water. One of the most effective parts of it all was raising the water rates and instituting a system where the lowest 400 cubic feet, whatever, the cheapest segment was just what was needed, sort of bare minimum. And the price for that was actually a little less than what it cost to produce. But then, as soon as you got up into the upper ranges, you know, as you know, the price per unit goes up. I don't know how much the raised rates affected water use in Santa Barbara this time. Do you recall, Bill, was there a significant drop after people got their first newer water rate, new bills at the water, new rates?
Yes, I recall that that was a big factor in the reduction that we saw back then, but I think it was a combination of all the things that we put forward, including regulations and public awareness, the block rate structure, and the whole gamut of tools that we used to respond. But rates are certainly an important part of that.
Well, I expect you will see even more careful water use after the new rates.
Right. Those rates are under development now.
The new higher, even higher rates go in. For now, I think this drought is a lot worse than the last one, and we've just got to do everything we can. So, I would concur with my colleagues on the deferral of landscape installation, making that mandatory. That has a, we also have this Waterwise Garden Program, where we're trying to get people to get rid of their lawns, but that would mean that that would have to stop, because they wouldn't be able to, you know, if we do that, so that has a negative potential. While I would like to see even more people getting rid of their lawns, but I think for now, I think we do need to, a landscape installation deferral is something that needs to be done. On swimming pools, by the way, do I understand it correctly, this one-third filling means you can't drain it any more than one-third and replace more than a third of the water? It's not a case of the pool being full only a third?
That's correct. It applies to existing pools. The restriction is to not drain it more than one-third and refill without authorization because of repairs that are required, and they would need to have the pool empty to do them.
Okay. Well, and I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Jordan, you know, there's no real bang for the bucks on the pools, but on the other hand, I think we're going to have to do everything. When you look at the chart with, you know, what we're short of in years five and six, even with the D-SAL online, you know, it's another 20%. I'm not sure just how much it is, is it about another 20%? So, that we, you know, beyond, we'd have to go another 20% to be able to survive on what we have. So, I would say, do that, restrict the pools. And then on the suspension of building permits, that's really, really hard, especially when reading the last line on page six, even if all of the projects currently in the pipeline were approved and built in the next year, it would represent just 1.14% of the annual drought water demand projection. It's a little bit, we've got to start somewhere. And again, you know, this drought is a lot worse than the last one. Last, 2014 was the warmest year ever in California, and I think we're seeing some permanent change in our climate, and that, which also means that the D-SAL plant is really, really going to be essential as another source of supply that is not dependent on rainwater. It's the only one that's not. So, I would, it's hard to decide at what point, but that, I think we're going to have to stop the process somewhere along there, perhaps before issuance of the building permit. The exceptions, exemptions, I'm willing to go along with those, and also add the high-density, all-rental AUD projects, the ones that would apply against the 250 units and that. And I don't have any problem with allowing rain barrels or whatever kind of water storage thing people want to have to capture rainwater runoff, which of course won't happen unless it rains, which point it's not so necessary. My impression about the additional reduction of water use in December was because it rained. And since most of our water use is outside. So, I guess that's it. I also like to let you know that the previous drought was my fault, in case you didn't know that. You know, if there's no rain, it's Mother Nature's fault. If there's no water, it's the mayor's fault. So much so that I had several people call me afterwards to thank me for bringing the rain back and ending the drought. So, Oda has such power.
Thank you. Commissioner Higgins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to keep it quick here, because I think staff has done a great job, and you've made a pretty good argument against locking down building permits at this time. So, of course, I'm in support of any kind of landscape deferral. With regard to pools, I think if you're going to exclude, I could be convinced to exclude pools, but not at the expense of institutional pools, or pools as a part of a hotel, or otherwise public pools. Terms of the building permits, I think we have to be careful which side of, you know, our mouth we're talking out of, but of course, the demand that's factored into the staff report is compelling, and I think we have to be careful not to lock people out of a process that they've fully engaged in regardless of whether or not they've applied for a permit. So, if you've done any development work with the city or county, you know that there's quite a bit of work that goes into before even setting foot inside the planning department or building department, and so, we would, I think, be wise to give people plenty of runway, or set that expectation out fairly far if we are going to put a building moratorium in place. I think it's a little bit, I'm not sure what to make of the lack of representation here by applicants of the 200 or so that are on the existing active permit case, there's probably got to be another couple hundred or so that are just not yet active because they're doing their investment or research or acquisition work. So, nobody here from the hotel industry or other industries affected by that? I take that back, there were three speakers representing the development community. So, I don't know what to make of that. I suppose if there were a lot of representation, then we'd know that was a big factor, but I guess maybe I'm questioning how, whether we could have done a little bit extra work with reaching out to the applicants in particular, specifically, or more aggressively on this item, and maybe we need to do that and have the item come back before any sort of moratoriums are considered. So, aside from that, I generally agree with the rest of the comments made by fellow commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. I guess the mandatory landscaping deferral makes a lot of sense to me because of where, that's where the water is, if you will, especially on lawns and, let's say, non-vital landscaping and irrigation to either street trees or erosion control or things like that. I think that's probably, and I know there's some numbers that are in there, maybe 11% reduction or something like that, if you just look at the lawn, I think that's a big one and a big area that we ourselves, as homeowners, have already seen is not a big deal, especially if you like clover, when it finally pops up. It's not bad, it's green. But I think that's an example of items that we've already addressed as current owners, and I think we're giving example of that that should also be followed by new development. As far as the, so the deferral on landscaping, rain barrels, anything that can be done to conserve water, I think there's plenty of examples that have been put out to the existing homeowners that could also be used in new development. Plus, I think it works both ways. I think new development of any type is going to have to follow the rules for water conservation. And if we don't have projects being built that exemplify that, who's going to know? Who's going to know that you can retrofit your own house? What low-flow toilets, on-demand water heating can really do unless we're showing it out there as examples in our new projects? If we didn't have the new projects, there wouldn't be examples of how to do it or people to follow, let's say, on what they could do to reduce their costs in water. So, I think it works both ways. What has the current community done, and then hopefully, those that are building new projects would be able to show based on the current regulations, which are much more restrictive, I would say, than the parameters that we're using, what it really means to cut back, and you can do it within the development without a big cost aspect, because those are not costly and non-beneficial items have already been factored out, we're not pushing for that. So, I think that'll be good to show as an example. The other thing is, as we showed, even on the, as far as the old, the current parameters that we're looking at, there's not that much saving based on aggregates, et cetera, before any of the efficiencies that are done. So, what's the bang for the buck that we're getting out of holding back permits? Little. What's the cost of holding back permits? A lot, in my mind. And, Chair Thompson, would it be appropriate, can I, may I?
Sure.
I just put an exhibit together so I can maybe follow and explain my thoughts, and I appreciate being able to do that. I gave it to staff early today, but I just thought about it overnight. And I think if we're looking back cutting back on development, except maybe for some, and cut back on others, I think you really have to, I have to look at, from our Plan Santa Barbara, essentially, what is, how does it all work together? I mean, it's not just one type of development is better, let's do that, but everything's associated from a social, economic, and sustainable standpoint. This is me, my feeling. I put down the nonprofit, which could be an exception, single multifamily market, hotel, and other non-industrial. How does it affect the local workers? One of the things in Plan Santa Barbara that two days ago was reinforced by approval of our housing element is we need to house our workforce, more local workers and cut down on commuters. Multifamily nonprofit, as well as market units, not just restricted to a certain type, are going to fulfill that need in certain ways. Does a hotel or other non-residential provide that? No. Do multifamily and single-family provide permanent jobs? No, but certainly the hotel and other non-residential does. So, you have this balance. In some case, you have a shortfall, and the other, somebody else is picking it up. Our sustainable community strategy and in our SEQUA analysis going forward is going to be on vehicle miles traveled. The multifamily nonprofit group serves local workers, and they serve it well, and I think that's a great point. But they're not really cutting down on VMP, because people are already here, or they don't have the cars to travel in the first place. Where do you get the bang for the buck on development by reducing vehicle miles traveled? And that's with our market housing that hopefully people would be able to afford based upon the zoning changes that we're looking at and doing under AUD and other constraints, and we're reducing the long trips. That's a counterbalance to increasing long trips from our visitors, and those who come and stay in hotels, if you're looking at a hotel project. Other non-residential would be a slight increase as well. TOT, definitely a benefit to our economy from the hotels, we know that, otherwise there wouldn't be three, I don't know how many hundred are in process right now, three, 200 or 300 or 400 motel rooms, because there's a need, and we know there's a spillover into staying into people's houses, et cetera, due in part, I would say, due to the lack of available product, which the hotel operators know is needed. But then, sales tax. If we have permanent residents, either with the nonprofit or the market, they're contributing to, they're spending their incomes here and contributing to the economy, the local economy, not just visitor-serving economy, but throughout the city. Same thing with retail generating that. And in property tax, less than wrong, the nonprofits would be tax-exempt, the other development would pay property taxes, service fees in order to help nonprofits, and they need the help. There would be some form of subsidy on use fees, exactly what occurred earlier on People's Self-Help Project, but full-service fees for single-family, multifamily, and even the meter fees to help support expansion of water activities. The use fees will be paid by other types of development. So, I think you have to look at, just like we're a community, development is driving a lot of things, social and economic, and our, the three biggest generators of our economy are TOT tax, property tax, and sales tax, and are pretty equivalent. And whatever we can do not to avert that, not to cause that, to undermine it, I think we have to look at, that's the benefit of continuing to provide development in a way that's not really affecting the housing, the water resource to a significant degree, but if we put a moratorium on, certainly we'll have other factors, especially since we just had a housing element approved two days ago. we just had a housing element approved two days ago. So, as far as building permits, I'm going to have to say no. I'm not going to pick and choose certain ones because I think everything interacts with each other. And we have enough control on the type of projects that we want and the -- how they look and how they interface, I think, to make sure that this is done right, but to the benefit of the whole community, not just to perhaps contribute to some water saving, which is the other side, but there's a lot more factors that are a negative to stopping development. Pools, I will go along with every of my colleagues think is appropriate, and that's my comments. And thank you for allowing me to visualize my thoughts. I appreciate it.
No, that's good. Helps everybody understand what you're saying, what your points are. Okay. I think that your summary on page nine, that chart really tells the story that the bang for the buck is going to come through water use regulation rather than development regulation. Having said that, we're here to discuss development regulation potentials, and so, let's talk about those. Landscape deferral, I agree with a couple of my colleagues that would agree with moving directly to a mandatory deferral of landscaping. And your proposed process as Exhibit A is probably a pretty good start. Might need a little bit of tweaking, but it's a good start. As far as moving down to suspension of permits for new development, I tend to agree a little bit with Commissioner Campanella. But if the city council decides that we're going to do that, I would say that projects that are already in the process shouldn't be stopped, and we shouldn't be saying that, oh, just because you didn't get a building permit, we're going to put a moratorium on the project. I think, like Commissioner Higgins said, we need to give people a long heads-up if we're going to do that. And I would also say that projects that have gone through a process with an EIR, where we've looked at all of the water use specifically, should not have their permits held up if the EIR has already recognized that they are not going to have a significant impact on the water use or has been mitigated. And if we do any of these, we should perhaps consider, in a priority sequence, phase them in so that we don't just throw everything on the table all at once. Mandatory landscaping deferral, building permit deferral, prohibiting new pools, all that stuff, all come out at one time. I think it would be much more logical and palatable if it was a phased approach. A couple of comments about a couple -- two or three things that were in the staff report. T-fire rebuilds. I think that most of the people that were going to rebuild, that lost their house in the fire, have already done it. There have been a lot of sales of properties that were not rebuilt, speculators. So, I think that we ought to look at it before we just give a blanket exemption because the property was destroyed by the T-fire. We ought to see if the person that wants to rebuild is the person that actually lost their property in the T-fire, and not just a speculative builder that wants to use it as an opportunity to build a new spec house, which I know has been going on. As far as pools, it's a pretty minuscule amount of water saved by restricting new pools, but I kind of think that it's along the same lines as putting signs in a restaurant saying, "We only serve water on request." It's symbolic more than an actual savings. And because of that, I think that it probably makes sense, if we're going to institute any of these, that we probably should put a restriction on building new pools, as you have suggested. And I agree with Commissioner Pujol that all pools, especially new ones where we can require it, should be covered. That's where we would really save money in the long run for water evaporation. I've been told over the years that having a pool doesn't save much compared to turf lawn because the evaporation from the pool uses almost as much water as the turf grass does. So, cutting the evaporation with a cover is definitely something that any pool owner should consider. The problem is, how do you enforce it? You know, you can install -- make them install a cover, but you can't make them use it, just like you can make people have a two-car garage, but you can't make them park their car in the garage, you know? That old game that we always talk about. As far as the potential zoning regulation changes, the idea of rain barrels is a good idea, and I think we should move right away to do that. And the idea of amending the building codes to allow for graywater systems, I completely agree with. I wanted to do it when I rebuilt my house after the T-fire and was told that we were not allowed to do it by the current building codes. It would be too expensive for me to go back and retrofit my house now, but I could have done it five years ago when I rebuilt after the fire. So, I think it's a good idea for new construction, but I suspect that it would be cost-prohibitive for people with existing homes. So, those are my thoughts. If you folks have any questions for us, feel free. And I would ask, do you have all the information from us that you wanted to get out of this meeting?
Thank you, Chair Thompson. I think we received good comments and discussion here today, and we're thankful that a few members of the development community did come. We notified every single contact we had of all the pending projects, and that was -- it wasn't a big crowd, but at least their conversation, they helped your conversation as well. And so, that was definitely beneficial. I think the council is in line with, from my observation in the prior conversations, many of the comments you all have made about the phased-in, very careful, deliberate approach, measuring bang for buck, and, you know, the benefit, while at the same time, like comments from Commissioner Lodge and others, where, you know, the conditions may really warrant, you know, any sort of action that helps the larger community grapple with the drought. And so, I think your discussion has really, you know, covered that full range of issues as well. Though, I think the one thing that I might just comment on, that as we move forward with this and helping the council understand your comments, on the issue of SEQA impacts or really large water users, a number of you have mentioned that, and I'm not sure if this information would be helpful to you. I want to share with you that is that, from a SEQA standpoint, we don't have a high-water-user threshold impact. The city's analysis of water impacts from new development has been done very programmatically. And, you know, when you think back to the Plan Santa Barbara EIR, we projected build-out of the community of all the various land uses, you know, non-residential, residential, and had the big-picture look at the water supply. So, just for feedback, you know, those of you that were kind of thinking, oh, well, if there's a big water user that's a SEQA significant impact, maybe those would be deferred. We don't really have that paradigm right now. If that was a new idea, say, establish a threshold at which large water users would be deferred in this drought, that's how I would probably translate your comments in that regard. And then, when it comes to large water users, if they are a land use such as a hospital that is a large water user, it's hard for them not to be a large water user. Again, everyone in the community, all land uses, property owners, community residents, are really stepping up, as evidenced by the amount of conservation that's been achieved. And I think to the degree that large water users can conserve, they will be, but they may still always be a large water user. So, that's the only area where I felt like I needed to, you know, give you some feedback on how we might think about that subject a little differently than some of your comments. But otherwise, I think everything makes a lot of sense, and it's -- I'm sure the council will be happy to know that you held this discussion and hear from you. So, thank you.
If I could, in response to what you said about projects, large water user projects, Mr. Medel from the Country Club was here, and one of the largest water users that you can get in any community is a golf course. But when we reviewed their project and it went through an EIR, even though they're a large water user, it's going to end up being less of a water user than it currently is. So, that was my point, that even though it's a large water user, if it's going to be a reduction in what they're currently using, why wouldn't we want them to go ahead with their project, rather than say, no, you can't do the project, keep on using as much water as you're doing today, which would be opposite of what we're trying to achieve? So, that's the reason why I brought up projects that have gone through a detailed SEQA analysis and an EIR. If it says they're going to use less water, we should take that analysis to the bank and let them proceed. So, that was the only reason why I mentioned that. Okay. Any other closing comments, Commissioner Pujol?
To add on to that, first of all, I agree with my fellow commissioner on that and on his statement. But also, I think we need to investigate. I appreciate the comments, Suisse, and they're helpful, very helpful. But I also think that we need to take a little bit more closer look in that category because we're talking about, hopefully, a temporary, even extended, but temporary drought situation. And if there's a large water user that, even if they are trying to mitigate as much as possible, still have significant impact on water use, I think we need to look at phasing, postponement of certain elements of the project, if feasible, that would at least get us through the drought period. And we're talking about a suspension of building permits. Maybe it's a suspension of a particular aspect of a building permit. If the water user is that large, then it's going to be a very significant user of water during a drought period, and we have to do something about it. So, that's the best I could come up with.
Okay. Unless staff has anything else, that concludes that item. Next would be our administrative agenda, committee and liaison reports. Staff hearing officer report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, they met last week, and I told you I had watched on and off it, on and off during the hearing, but I hadn't seen the entire condo project that's at De La Vina and Puente, which was just kind of rose to my awareness because it went through the Single Family Design Board and came out of that process, and then staff actually brought it back to the Single Family Design Board for additional discussions on compatibility. Hard to believe, I know. But it ended up coming out of Single Family Design Board fine and coming out of show fine. All it was, was a tentative subdivision map, but it sits on a corner, and it's a very prominent wedding cake, three-story, 40-foot-tall structure that just, when it sits on a corner, and in fact, the poles are still up today when I drove by, just kind of stands out there and shouts, "Here I am," for anybody who wants to shout back at it. So, it was kind of interesting. That was kind of interesting, watch the discussion on compatibility. So, I think that, as it's been a concern with us, it's a concern with everybody else on how to grapple with the concept of compatibility and make everybody happy. So, but it ended up coming out of a show with nothing further attached to it than it had come out of a Single Family Design Board.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Higgins?
Most recent Parks and Rec Commission hearing included discussion about redesigning the Carrillo Ballpark. So, we're talking about basketball courts again by the beach. That was well-written up in the local newspapers, though. So, I also attended this morning Transportation and Circulation Committee with Mr. Campanella, but I'll let him chime in on that.
Okay. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This Monday this week, I attended the monthly Water Commission hearing, a few highlights. First, even in light of the rain, the warm weather plus the lack of rain is still putting us in a very severe condition because, separate from not having rainfall, with the warm weather, the water we are getting, or the rain we are getting, is evaporating very quickly. So, as of February 8th, Gibraltar is at 67% of norm, Kachuma Lake, 72% of norm, Santa Barbara overall, 80% of norm. Now, on the supplemental water purchase side, I think it's important for the public to know that just below D-SAL, this is the next most expensive form of water. There are water owners, so to speak, in the state that are really in the catbird seat, so to speak. They are selling their water at whatever the market rate will bear. So, for example, we are paying anywhere from, a broad range, $500 to $1,100 an acre foot for water, and some of the contracts we have include a requirement to pay back the water we are getting from these water users. Now, Mr. Hagmark clarified for me, explained rather, that we're probably not going to be able to use our own water to pay back the water we owe. We'll have to then buy additional water from another water user to pay back the water we owe a separate water owner. So, this just -- that's why I mentioned how severe the drought is for us. It's not just immediate lack of rainfall. Tomorrow, in Pismo Beach, the California Coastal Commission is going to be hearing our coastal development permit for our D-SAL plant renewal, and that's a big item, I know. The mayor and many staff members will be -- and the city attorney's office will be attending to that. Lastly, the 2014 Water Hero in Santa Barbara was our own City College. They've had a 30% reduction. They have retrofitted many of their facilities, inside and out. They've removed their turf, we were told, and they have improved and removed and replaced other high-water-use landscaping. So, kudos to City College. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you, Chair Thompson. Attended a downtown parking committee meeting today with Jay, and we -- a couple of items that came up were of interest. Basically, over the Thanksgiving and Christmas weekend, there was quite an uptake in demand on the parking lots that showed year-to-year. And with that, there's some action items to start looking on how to divert people to get the parking lots to 10 and 6, which includes the Granada Garage, in order to, when there's availability, how to get people around town to get to those spots. The Granada itself was about 52% in revenue. I think as people are finding it now, especially with public market and others, Victoria Theater utilizing the lots next to them. There will be a retreat coming up on March 12th that we'll be attending, and these issues and others will be discussed. Thank you.
Okay. I'll talk about two meetings of interest to the Planning Commission. Single Family Design Board on Monday again saw some of the preliminary design for the four-lot subdivision that we approved on San Remo, that was the subject of an appeal to the city council. And I think based upon the results of the appeal being approved by the council, rather than decreasing the size of the two other lots on subdivision, as the board had requested, they actually increased the size that they came forward. But after a lot of discussion, the board gave them preliminary design approval with some requirements to go back and make some other changes. Three items of interest to us at the council hearing Tuesday. One was the ZIR update, and after a lot of discussion, the council directed staff to go back through the process, not to sidestep coming back to us. There were some that felt it should go first to the ordinance committee, but they finally decided to go back, tweak the draft ordinance, come back to us, then go to the ordinance committee. The Mission Canyon Plan, another long discussion, but it was approved as a capital project for the CIP. And finally, the housing element was approved, as we suggested, and forwarded it to the council. So, unless anybody has anything else. Renee, anything else from you? Okay. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.[1780.63][1780.63][music]